I'll just wait a minute. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the April 1st, 2025 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present with the exception of Mr. Malloy, who is excused tonight. I will let you know that we did finish a workshop earlier, so we amended the agenda to move the executive session that shows at the end of the meeting before the meeting. So if we do not take an executive session that is on the agenda, that's why we did change the agenda for that piece of it. There are two public hearings tonight. If you wish to speak, there are forms on the podium in the back. Please fill them out and turn them into our city clerk. We will let you speak. Just as a reminder, when people do speak in public meetings, we are going to politely listen to everybody. And we've had very good results, if you will, out here. We may not always disagree, or may not always agree, but we will respectfully listen to each other. And I ask that everybody honors that. And even if you disagree with someone, no calling from the audience, no comments from the audience. If you need to speak, we'll have you do it at the podium. And again, everybody will treat you with the same respect. So thank you for that. We have a couple of proclamations tonight. First proclamation is Fair Housing Month, whereas April 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Idaho Human Rights Commission Act has prohibited discrimination in housing since 1969. And whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city. And equal access to housing is an important component of this goal, as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment. And housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability. And whereas housing choices impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies. And ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Idahoans can barriers to fair housing be removed. And therefore, I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Post Falls. And the second proclamation is Week of the Young Child. Whereas the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children, Idaho A E Y C, is celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 5th through 11th, 2025. And whereas we are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Post Falls, Idaho. And whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, of young children birthed through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Post Falls, deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and the prosperity of our society. Now therefore, I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April 5th through 11th, 2025, as Week of the Young Child in Post Falls, Idaho, and do hereby recognize that when our community invests in early childhood education and educators, we also invest in our children and families. Counsel, the next item up is I would like confirmation for the appointment of Deborah Patterson to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And there was an explanation in the agenda packet as to the reason for the appointment.
I move to confirm the appointment of Deborah Patterson to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second?
Motion second, further discussion. Rule call, please.
Stig Leder, aye. Plu?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Are there any other amendments to the agenda other than the one I described?
We have no further amendments to tonight's agenda.
Are there any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts and site business? Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the March 18th, 2025 City Council meeting. Item B is accounts payable from March 19th through April 2nd, 2025. Item C is trailer park wave maintenance services agreement with Avista Utilities. And item D is Parks Division items for surplus.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I have a question about an item in the surplus. The multi crane, I tried to look up what that item is. Is it like a full-size crane that we are just disposing of? There's, are we able to do anything with that?
Good evening, Brian Myers, Parks Manager. The multi crane is a hitch-mounted crane, winch crane that we use, historically have used to empty our eight-foot-deep cans through the parks. And currently, we're using a small wheel loader unit. It's just much more efficient and a little safer for the crew.
Gotcha.
So it's just a surplus item. The winch itself is still out, and we don't have a use for it anymore.
And it wasn't listed to go to auction. Is it not usable for anyone anymore?
It is not.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Crane items are one of those that, when you're lifting overhead, you don't want to provide that risk to someone else if it were to be surplus. So it's better to just dispose of it.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? You entertain a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Rule call, please.
Plu?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig Leder? Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Now we're in the public hearing section. The first public hearing tonight is the Steckman Annexation File Number ANNX 2409. With that, I'll call the public meeting to order. John Manley.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, we've had a lot of people sign up for both public hearings. They are sort of in the same area. We'd ask that if anybody wants to adopt the same testimony for the following hearing, we can do that. But I just wanted to put that out upfront so that we don't have to go through a repeat.
Okay.
We've got a number of folks who've signed up on the same form for both hearings. And so either, when we get to the second hearing, you can adopt that testimony into the record of the second hearing, or you can have folks come up and say the same thing again. That's kind of the options you've got in front of you.
Okay, everybody understand that, any audience who wish to speak? Okay? So we will recognize you for the first one. And then when your name comes up on the second, we'll ask if you want to say anything different or just want to adopt what you said previously. Okay? Thank you, Phil. Ward, go ahead, John.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, council members. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the City of Post Falls, introducing the staff report for the Steckman Annexation, ANNX 2409. The owner of this property is Blackwell Homes LLC, and the applicant representative is the Downhouten Consultant and Design. They are asking for City Council to approve the requested annexation of approximately 6.7 acres, it's about seven acres with the right-of-way, and apply the medium-density residential R2 zoning to it. Location is as you see here on the west side of Spokane Street, south about midway between West Prairie Avenue and Grange Avenue. It's west of the golf course. Looking at the surrounding zoning of this proposal, you see everything to the north and south and east is other R1 properties at various densities. To the north, you have probably a little bit of larger lots in R1. To the south, you have your typical R1 lots that you see. And then to the east of Spokane Street, you do see some smaller lots that are in that golf course as part of how that was developed. Looking at some other additional information, you can see here that currently there is a single-family use on it. It's over the Rathfrye Aquifer. Water provider for this area is East Green Acres Irrigation District. The City of Post Falls would be the wastewater provider. And you can see in the staff report and on here that we do have the capacity to provide service and are willing to serve the property. For traffic, Spokane Street is just to the east, and that's an arterial roadway. Tennessee Avenue is a local residential roadway that would meander through this proposed project. And additional rights away in easements would be needed as part of the annexation for Spokane Street. Now we're beginning the look at some of the review criteria for applying zoning. We look at the future land use map and the goals and policies first. And so looking at here, the future land use designation, it's in the low-density residential designation in the comp plan. It entertains land uses of single-family up to eight dwelling units per acre. You can see here that R2 is one of the implementing zoning districts in that low-density. Initially, when we first adopted the comprehensive plan, R2 was not in, it was not in implementing zoning district. We removed multifamily out of the R2 zoning district. Then this allowed staff to propose the concept of, because there's no longer multifamily in the R2, that maybe it would be suitable in the comprehensive plan. And it was deemed suitable, and it was amended, and then included in that. This site's also in the Central Prairie focus area. As you see there in the implementing zone, not only do we look at the zones, we also look at some of the focus area to see if the proposal is consistent with the theme for those areas. So looking at how they kind of blend together, the goals, policies, and the future land use map, kind of provide this here, this chart. Looking at the Central Prairie, it looks at embracing a variety of housing types and land uses, maintaining quality standards, provide a greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness, connecting neighborhoods, community trails, and nearby amenities. So this particular site, even though it's a commercial endeavor, the golf course to the east would be an amenity. It's publicly-owned amenity, but it is an amenity within the community. Similarly, the commercial site just to the south and east of this would also be a nearby walkable amenity to not only this site, but the residents in the area. Some, one of the goals here, maintain and improve the transportation network. That's Goal Six. On pace and in concert with the need in the plan objectives. And this is to help with that connectivity to some of those amenities and the pedestrian friendliness and whatnot. To the right there, you see the policies that would tie into this. Policies 24, 26, and Policy 33, they kind of all work together. Policy 24 and 26 is looking at getting that right-of-way and easements, looking at getting road improvements, getting the pedestrian connectivity. And that's how it kind of ties into that Goal Six. And Policy 33 kind of shoots right towards the annexations that when we're looking at annexations, also looking at that, does that help create those transportation networks, enabling the connectivity of neighborhoods? So right here, you see, the highlighted red, that's the proposed annexation area. And to the west, that's the public hearing after this. The intent is from the applicant, and the applicant can speak a lot more on this aspect, but is to connect Guy Road through elfers and through this project. There's that reference Tennessee Avenue that would come up and meander back up towards Spokane Street. And that's getting that road connectivity through those projects over easterly towards Spokane Street. This would allow for another access to Spokane Street. Currently, the main access point, if you wanted to go easterly, would be go north through Ashworth Lane and to Spokane. And so this potentially would allow another access point that direction. Goal Seven, Plan Four and Establish Types of Quantities of Land Uses in Post Falls, Supporting the Community Needs and Long-Term Sustainability. The three to the right there could be consistent. So Policy Eight and Nine, and Policy Fifteen, Eight and Nine, both look at encouraging annexation pockets and infill for that sustainability. Oftentimes, the county pockets are surrounded by other public services and other infrastructure that allows that to be more fiscally responsible than going out on the periphery at times, depending on the situation. And this just happens to be, I have it highlighted here in the middle, the surrounding neighborhoods surrounding this county island. Policy Fifteen kind of looks at the housing element of that, ensure that the adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through the provisions of diverse housing and price levels. Recently, we accepted the, and have the housing needs assessment. I just highlighted one of the strategies here on homeownership is to provide diverse housing types to meet those needs. And so looking back here, you do see some varying types, diversity of housing. So it's possible that the proposal could assist with that strategy, providing a diverse housing type for this area. Here's the three zone change review criteria that you see here. The first two is what I've highlighted, dealing with the goals and policies. The third one there deals with, does their proposal create a demonstrable adverse impact? This is where we notify other agencies and see if, will we get back for input? See if there's any issues that was unknown by staff. This is the list of who we notified. Then of the responses, we've heard from the school district. They've remained neutral, as well as the police department. Cootney County Fire and Rescue, they said they would review at the time of permitting. The YPL, Phillips 66, they had no utilities in that vicinity. DEQ had no comment, as well as ITD. And the Post Falls Highway District had no comment. I did attach, and in your staff report, you do see that there is a signed annexation agreement from the applicant. Here, they do concede that they would not exceed the eight dwelling units that was referenced in that future land use map for low density. So they would stay below that limitation of the future land use map. They also have agreed to construct only single detached units. That means there'd be no duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, or whatnot that would otherwise be allowed in that R2 zone. Also, there's some other various conditions that staff proposed to help create a more aesthetically pleasing environment also, as well as some safety features here. This one's against the railroads, so staff wanted them to provide fencing for some secure fencing between this development and the railroad to the south. Once again, here's the three zone change criteria. Any questions for me at this point?
Mr. Manley.
I do have a question about the streets.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, can I ask you that now?
Go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, so Spokane Street, north of Poline, does that have the same designation as South Poline? It just seems like there will be quite a few access points for a road that is, it's 35 there, right? It changes right at Grange from 30 to 35. And there's no left-hand turn lane that goes down that portion of Spokane. Is that, is that correct?
I would have to defer, I don't have the road access memorized. I would probably pull the expert up to kind of like discuss that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On your question on Spokane Street and the two-way center turn lane, there is a two-way center turn lane between Prairie, just about up to where the access is envisioned to be with the elfers, excuse me, not the elfers, but with the Steckman property. And then we narrow the road down for where it goes across the railroad tracks. And then once we get up to Blaze Loop, then the road widens back out to the two-way center turn lane again.
So would the intention, once this annexation is done and the right-of-way is obtained, would be to continue that three lanes?
The right-of-way requests that would go along with this would allow for the completion of the multi-use path on the west side of Spokane Street and the placement of the missing pieces of curb and gutter which aren't out there. There is a little bit of a turn lane, and I don't remember exactly how much is in that area, but we would get as much turn lane as we could. This would be anticipated based upon the layout in the area that it would not need to be a very large turn lane, probably a 50 footer, which is not atypical for these type of locations.
Okay, so the ability to have a turn lane to allow people to make a left-hand turn into that entry point without backing up over the?
Without backing up over the railroad tracks.
Yeah, okay. And then, oh, I guess I'll ask you on the next annexation? It's hard, because they do seem to be quite connected. My question is about Guy Road and the development of that. So I can ask on the next annexation.
Let's roll that.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Samantha.
If there's traffic?
I actually have a similar question, too. So from the map, I'm envisioning Tennessee Avenue basically taking a straight shot onto Spokane Street. Is that relatively accurate?
No, what we envision is Tennessee Avenue following the railroad tracks until you get about the depth of a lot away from Spokane Street, then it'd head north. And then it would intersect, and let's see, does that show up on?
Yes.
Okay, we envision that, we've got this road here. We envision that Tennessee Avenue would intersect about at this location, getting it a little bit further away from the railroad and also getting the two intersections lined up.
Okay, so with that then, and thank you for asking that question, because it's part of my concern on this access point is left-hand turns going north out of that access point would need to cross the southbound lane and the center turn lane?
So leaving Tennessee Avenue to get onto Spokane Street, you'd cross the southbound lane, and then you'd go across the turn pocket to get to the northbound lane, yes.
Okay, so considering that with the proximity to the railroad crossing, is that of any concern for you?
No.
Okay.
If I was to start to worry about it, it would be if we anticipated a very high traffic volume going into the subdivision on a regular basis. And then you'd get to that situation where the arms go down, you have a lot of southbound traffic, and all of a sudden, you've blocked the access into Tennessee. And then what Madam Stig Leder was referring to, then possibly backing up onto the railroad tracks. But I do not foresee that the traffic is going to be high enough with the proposed density and the other roads in the area that you're going to have that problem.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just, it's also in consideration of the Spokane Street north and into the next development north of Prairie that we know is coming. Traffic densities probably have not reached that point yet to be concerned about. What I'm, I guess more specifically asking is, is it a consideration to make that a right-hand only out of Tennessee on just?
It would be best to take a closer look if this was annexed and when they look at their subdivision, to look at that in the subdivision process. I do know that looking at our current transportation master plan, which takes us through 2035, we show 2035 volumes on Spokane Street at, it's under 50%. If I'm remembering correctly, they're at 44% of the volume-to-capacity ratio for that roadway. Going back to the last City Council meeting, 90% volume-to-capacity is the threshold that we're looking at with concerns on the roadway. So there's plenty of roadway capacity on Spokane Street. We've taken a look out to 2045, but that's a little bit more anecdotal at this point. We don't see any major problems, but they're still tweaking as we're going through the transportation master plan. But through 2035, with more than 50, well, in this case, another 40% of your road capacity there before you hit the area that we start getting concerned, I don't have any worries from my perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Samantha, you had a, look like you might have had another question.
Yeah, well, it's, that's just my face, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. But I actually do. So now that you've sort of like pointed a little bit more with Tennessee, so Tennessee for this development will be the only access onto Spokane. So all traffic for this development will filter through Tennessee?
Well, if this project came in today, and it was built today, and it was standalone, they would have a single access point onto Spokane Street. They would also be connected up onto Tennessee, so people within that subdivision would have the ability to come through on Tennessee, out to Grange, over to Chase. If, over time, our master plan anticipates that the 30 acres which comprise this area in here, which is west of Guy Road, and then this area here is also part of that total 30 acres, when all of this is built out, we anticipate that there will, there will most likely be, in order to accommodate development, a roadway which will come out to Guy Road as well. So there will be more than one way ultimately to leave this area and access the road network.
Once it's developed all the way out to Chase, but with just this annexation question, the only street?
Standalone, it would have access to Tennessee Avenue to get you out to Guy Road, which Guy Road will connect you down to Grange, up to Ashworth. There's more than one way in and out of this subdivision.
It would connect you to Grange and Ashworth?
Yes. So you'd connect here. You could either come up this way, down this way, up Guy Road to Ashworth, or you could continue over to here and down to Grange Avenue, which would allow you east-west back to Spokane or Chase.
It's, okay.
So with initial development, you have two access points to this parcel of land.
Sort of. But only one street is being built in that parcel of land. That's a through street. That is connecting at Tennessee and then going up to Spokane. Everything else to fill in.
Tennessee connects here?
Yeah.
And you could go south on Tennessee, so you could get out to the southwest and to Spokane Street.
Tennessee is your only ability to get in and out of that little red square?
Okay, yeah, one road, two access points.
That, right, okay, so that was my question. So there is not anticipated to be any road built east and west within that shape that would give you additional?
We anticipate that they would build a roadway that would terminate at the elfers property to accommodate further connectivity.
So Tennessee would become a through street?
Yes.
For the entire development, okay.
Any questions, Rob? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask Mr. Manley another question?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you so much to you and your staff for putting in the annexation agreement points that you highlighted. I thought that that was really thoughtful. And because you knew it, I was thinking probably, I really appreciate that. I do have a question.
Do you, Wendy?
No, actually, we, between P and Z and here, we put together the annexation agreement when it was signed. We anticipated some of the concerns from the P and Z's. So that shows a lot of good merit of the P and Z meeting. We anticipated some of the concerns, and we just threw them into the annexation agreement, knowing who knows, other things may come up, and that agreement may still need to be amended. But, you know, we do our best to try to get it prepared for tonight.
Rob, Samantha, I mean, you're.
No, of course, I absolutely appreciate the, having in writing the eight to an acre, specifically, eight dwelling units to an acre. I guess my question is, what restrictions then are being held in R2 that couldn't be achieved in R1? Is it truly just lot sizes that's different that is beneficial in R2? Because I guess what I'm saying is, based on the map and the future land use map, it does feel like R1 is the most appropriate. It's surrounded essentially by R1. We're locking into a density that is R1. And to your point about taking multifamily out of R2 so that it could be in low-density, we also have RM in low-density, which I'm pretty sure allows multifamily. So as a little like, so that's sort of confusing to me, I guess. What is it about R1 that was not appropriate for this piece of land that we had to go to R2? And then right into the development agreement restrictions that are reminiscent of R1?
I'll do the best that I can answer from the planning side. I do know the applicant might be able to address that, how R2 fit their needs maybe better than I can and contemplate why that is. But I do know that the R1 doesn't allow for as small a lots innately as R2 can. R2 single-family lots can go down to 4,000 square foot lots. Cottage homes are permitted outright in the R2 versus in the R1. They need a special use permit.
Okay.
I do know that the applicants intend to do a PUD of sorts. And so they're looking at, the RM does have a 7% open space, but they did contemplate that. When they are looking at applying, they discussed all their different options. And then we communicate to any applicant what are the pros and cons and what path they would like to move forward. So the R2 was the path that they chose. And I believe some of those parameters and constraints are the differences of why it made it be proposed as an R2.
Because there are no housing requirements as to like what size of, there's no minimum house size that you need to build. size that you need to build in either of those, right? So like, you can build whatever size house you want in those as long as you have the right sized lot and the right setbacks, correct?
Yeah, the R1, your minimum lot size outside of a PUD is sixty-five hundred square feet with a sixty-foot minimum. And kind of what led the conversation down this was the first piece that was ever discussed was this piece of this location, which is across from the golf course. And it has kind of an awkward orientation to, across the street for that, the egress. And so whenever you get awkward pieces of land, typically my experience, it lends itself to more creative type housing lot layouts. And so I think that's what began that conversation and some sort of like what kind of lotting pattern can be created. And then as you move further, I mean, Elfr's is more of your typical five-acre lot. So, once again though, we sat down with them and I do think some of those R1 size constraints and some of the parameters led to where they proposed the R2.
Okay, does a PUD trump an annexation development?
No, I don't believe so. I believe that you could annex with an annexation agreement and then they can come in as a PUD. They would still have to be consistent with the annexation agreement. Okay, but they, you would then still have to stay within the density parameters. So in our PUD, we have you can't exceed a density of certain percentages based off of open space. They give up open space for density. So it's possible with the R1, you can do a PUD and get some density bonuses and decrease your lot sizes that way.
But should we go R2 with an annexation agreement? Even a PUD that could come in and try to increase density would not be able to do that because it has eight per acre written in the annexation agreement, correct?
Yeah, that would be, we would have to stick to the eight dwellings per acre as the annexation.
Right, and single-family dwellings.
And single-family would be, would stay consistent, even if they came with a PUD in the R2, we would stick to those, correct?
Okay, awesome, I think that's.
Just to put it in the record quickly because Field and I are nodding our heads. So the only way you get out of the annexation agreement is to amend that agreement that requires another hearing in front of the city council.
Okay.
So anything that's done in a PUD isn't going to trump that agreement. If they wanted to do something different, we're back here in front of you and you get a chance to figure out if that makes sense or not.
Okay, all right, great, I think I'm done, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John. Did the applicant wish to speak? Name for the record, please. There you go.
All right, my name is Merle Van Houten. I am owner of Van Houten Consulting and Design, the address is 401 East Sherman Avenue. Members of the council, mayor, hi. I'm here for, before you tonight to speak about the annexation request for thirty-six, thirty-five North Spokane Street into the R2 zone. So I'd like to thank Mr. Manley for his presentation and the questions that he and Mr. Paulus answered. I think they did a great job with, with their presentation. So, as again I said, I'm, I'm the owner of Van Houten Consulting and Design and I'm representing Blackwell Homes LLC. The request is for six point seven acres into the R2 zone. Before I get into a little bit further, I want to just kind of provide a clarification if I could. We brought these in as two separate applications, Steckman and Elfr's originally, because they were two different applicants. And that was the case as we went through the P and Z hearing. After the P and Z hearing, a change occurred and now Blackwell Homes would be the developer of both of these pieces. So if we were to rerun this again through the process, this would be a single hearing, but as it is, we've already began and here we are with two hearings. But that will come up again later and it'll be an important piece of the next Elfr's hearing. But I wanted you to be aware of that now, that we are, Blackwell Homes is intending to develop this Steckman piece as well as the Elfr's piece. And due to time constraints, I'm going to kind of breeze through these slides, we can come back to them if you like. But there's the vicinity and there's the existing conditions. And it does kind of show a glimpse of that railroad crossing that you were discussing, so I hope that's helpful and we can again come back. But just envision a pedestrian pathway that's, that's connecting to the one on the other side of the railroad tracks there and kind of have the idea. So, but the goal is objectives before us tonight with our request for this development. First and foremost, you know, we're seeking affordable housing, an option to, to create a need of very much growing concern. So we want to bring houses to the market that are below median value, values, that are available for individual ownership. And with the ability to have families reside in the same area where people, you know, where they work and enjoy things like dedicated open space and have an actual neighborhood that they can take pride in. So, so helping people realize that American dream. But we also have to be mindful of, you know, our surroundings and we want to be compatible with the neighborhoods around us to the greatest extent that we can while providing this affordable housing option. So we, we set the compatible, or the, the density equal to that which is prescribed in the city's comprehensive plan. You know, we use that as our guide. No multifamily housing, you know, we're interested in building the single-family homes only. We're not interested in townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, or anything of that sort. So, you know, discussion of those things can be set aside for tonight, it's single-family housing. And scaled housing to that effect, you know, you know, to a certain degree, you know, you could consider a cottage home or a tiny home, a single-family house. Again, we're trying to do something that would be a bit more compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods than, you know, a cottage home, which is limited to fourteen hundred square feet. We think, you know, we can bring something to the market that's still affordable while, you know, a little bit more to scale to what's surrounding. So, and of course, we have better connectivity, which we'll get to the road connectivity that we, we discussed. And that leads us into this limited city impact. We already have connection to a major collector road. This will actually help ease traffic on some of the local roads. We have water and sewer and we're already served by the city's police and schools, so, you know, it's a classic infill development, you know. So again, looking at that future land use map and the items that are defined in the comprehensive plan, this is all straight out of the comprehensive plan, all types of single-family residential uses, up to eight units per acre. And the implementing zoning district is R2 among others. So, the focus area, as John kind of touched on, we are solidly in the central prairie. The development trends focused on addressing single-family needs. Say affordable housing certainly fits within that. With land values increasing, new projects are more likely to integrate higher-density housing with their community amenities to broaden their appeal to buyers. Yes, so what we're proposing is slightly higher in density than the ones that John pointed out with your slightly larger lots to the north. But getting closer to what's happening across the street and the golf course along Brookie Drive. Future growth should embrace a variety of housing types and land uses. Maintain quality standards and provide even greater emphasis on connecting neighborhoods to community trails and nearby amenities. We certainly aim to do that as well. So more detailed discussion on affordable homeownership. Certainly there's a demand for housing, you know, KMPO is saying that there's going to be seventy-five thousand people living in Post Falls by 2035. The comprehensive plan says seventy-three thousand new residents by 2040. So by either standard, there's a lot of people moving here. So we see things like the city staff hosting presentations with NIBCA about housing. And, you know, of course, the housing analysis that was just approved by the council recently. So, you know, it's coming up and time and again, it's grabbing a lot of headlines and, you know, I think the more and more applications are going to come forward to try and address it. Because what we have is, you know, hardest housing market conditions with the median home prices of five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And according to Paha, eighty percent of households can't afford to purchase a home in Cootin County. So it's, it's becoming more and more difficult, you know, with, with the housing survey conducted in this city, we found that seventy-nine percent of respondents said housing prices are a major issue. And, and, you know, of course, cost of living is, is a factor. That same survey said that twenty-seven dollars an hour is what needed, is what's needed as a wage for Post Falls residents to afford rent. And that a ninety-three, or, sorry, ninety-three thousand five hundred dollar annual salary can afford a home of four hundred and ten thousand, according to a recent article in the paper. And of course, this all comes along with, you know, the proclamation we just heard about, the Fair Housing Month. So I feel like that is, also speaks to what is happening in terms of demand, market, and cost of living. So you're, I think we're among a few projects that you're starting to see that, that try and address this. We're not alone, I think what we can point to the miracle on Britain is one of those success stories that's grabbed a lot of headlines recently. We see this development aimed at households earning seventy-five thousand to hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars with home prices in the two ninety to four thirty range. You know, they're about thirty-seven foot wide lots, floor plans up to fifteen hundred square feet. And they brought twenty-eight new homes to the market and it's been heralded as a huge success. So what we do is try and emulate something like that. And in fact, we have people here who can speak very detailed about that development. So in comparison, what we're proposing is to try and bring homes to the market under four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Similar lot sizes, slightly larger floor plans, we want to try and get to that thirteen hundred to eighteen hundred square foot. And this particular annexation piece, we're, you know, anticipating we could get up to forty-seven new homes with that eight unit per acre density, all while providing open space. So, a little bit deeper into the density thing, which hopefully will answer a few other questions that I heard. So R1 zoning, R1 zoning, if you take that sixty-five hundred square feet divided up, that leads you to six point seven units per acre. A little bit less than what the comprehensive plan prescribes. So what we, what we see here is that, you know, these larger lots, they set the price point a little bit higher, makes it a little bit harder to attain a homeownership. So that's why we started looking at options outside of R1. We want people who grew up here to be able to live here, you know. So with our proposal, in the R2, while staying within the comprehensive plan, we meet that low-density residential prescription of eight units per acre. So we can keep within the city's planned growth, but we can keep the prices we bring to the market slightly lower. If we were to go just full on R2, you know, then we would be allowed to have, you know, we'd be asking for ten point nine units per acre. Don't really feel like that's compatible with the surrounding uses. Exceeds the comprehensive plan, it just is not a good idea. So that's why we're kind of limiting ourselves and agreeing to this eight units per acre. It's kind of an R2 light, as one of the P and Z commissioners said. So housing type, this is kind of a sketch of what we could see. Single-family detached housing, of course. These houses will be put on the market, the developer has no intention of creating some sort of rental neighborhood by retaining them himself. He will put these on the market. Three-bed, two-bath, two-stories tall, attached garage, and smaller yards equal less maintenance, which, you know, if you're a senior living on fixed income, that's an attractive feature. Guaranteed will not be duplexes, twin homes, townhomes, or multifamily. It also won't be cottage homes. So, you know, cottage homes per code can only be fourteen hundred square feet. And that's the maximum floor plan. You know, and I, I wanted to point that out because if, you know, our, our ultimate goal tonight is, is to be annexed into the city. We would really prefer it be an R2. But, you know, if we came away with an R1 zoning, then, you know, how do we achieve affordable housing? Maybe cottage homes comes back into the discussion. But we're limited to something smaller than what we want. We don't want cottage homes, we want to go bigger. We're trying to hit more like eighteen hundred square feet. So here's the conceptual layout, we can come back to this in the questions because I'm running low on time, but you see Tennessee connecting up and across, creating a four-way intersection with Brookie. And then we have another road heading out east to Guy Road. Goals and policies, these are very similar to the ones that John put up. Starting here on the right, policy thirty-three, enable completion or preserve continuity of circulatory patterns. So yes, we're doing that. Encouraging annexation of county islands, I think we are definitely the definition of that. Maintain small-town scale charm and beauty. I think the single-family product helps do that, like that achieves it. And staying with that density as set in the comprehensive plan does as well. So that all leads to, to just its balanced and resilient economy, providing community and prosperity and fiscal health. So we're trying to help do our best to walk the fine line of providing housing options for everyone while keeping Post Falls, you know, the attractive place to be, you know, that everybody loves and enjoys. So how did we do with our goals and objectives? Home prices below median values, yeah. That way people who can grow up here can buy here. We're talking about raising our kids to be able to stay here and buy a starter home. Talking also about our seniors who are on fixed income, demonstrated, there's been a demonstrated need for that as well. So we're hitting that mark. And in the meantime, I'm going to jump over here to neighborhood compatibility. Compatible with density prescribed in the city comprehensive plan. Eight units per acre max, that's the condition of approval we agreed to. No multifamily, again, that's a condition of approval that we've agreed to. Scaled housing, we feel like we can do slightly better than, than that R1 cottage home SUP of fourteen hundred square feet. We'd like to go a little bit bigger than that, which is one of the reasons why we chose R2 instead of just, you know, cottage home SUP in the R1. And, you know, we're giving better connectivity to the, to the community through roads and pedestrian improvements. Again, limited city impact, we, we check all the boxes with the utilities and the roadways. So the, at the conclusion of the P and Z commission, you know, we agreed to the conditions regarding density and single-family residences only. The decision was unanimous approval and I think that concludes my presentation.
Questions, Mr. Van Houten?
Could you go back to slide eleven for me, please? I know you're running short of time, I appreciate you being aware of that. I just wanted to ask you about the, is that a park on that open space? What kind of a, is it just?
So what you're seeing here, what you're seeing here is a, is a PUD type of a product for the subdivision. So we're dedicating open space in, in order to, you know, request other deviations. So, so yes, ten percent open space as well as, it's also achieved by this corridor here that would be a pedestrian connector from Tennessee out, out to Spokane Street. This, this here would be an alleyway so that you'd have lots that front, you know, with pedestrian connectivity to Spokane Street, but vehicular, you know, alley access.
Reloaded on.
Yep, perfect, yeah. So then, yeah, we anticipate that we'd have that public road that connects over to the east, you know, to Guy Road. And again, going back to what I said at the beginning, you know, this, this is now controlled by a single developer. So there was some concern at the P and Z that, well, what, you know, what, what, you know, how do we control what develops when? It's all handled by a single developer now, so that's much more, you know, achievable than when we had two applicants on two potentially different timelines.
And then for the open space, will that be managed by HOA or what's the plan for?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so under the PUD, one of the requirements is that they establish an HOA and provide all the documents, you know, to the city. Okay?
So we would have, we'd have front doors on a major collector intentionally?
So, I mean, yeah, it would be, so I don't have a typical section for Spokane Street, but you have, and, and I don't want you to, because what I don't want you to envision is, you know, front doors pressed up against, you know, the curb. There's, you know, from the curb, there's a probably a ten-foot separation. Then there's a, you know, to ten to twelve-foot wide multi-use path. And then there's, you know, a building set back, you know, from, for, you know, from the front yard. You know, so, so yes, it would be facing Spokane Street, but, you know, well, I could be, I don't know whether that distance is exactly from curb to front of house.
Well, I guess this isn't a platting hearing that doesn't come back to city council and it's not technically something that we're allowed to consider, but that seems odd to me that we, I know that we have front doors that face Spokane in like older parts of the city where those houses were built and then Spokane developed, but to intentionally put front doors on what we are then calling a major collector to justify additional housing. I mean, if you were to tell me it was a minor collector, like a, I don't know, some lower classification of road, that might make sense, but then we couldn't justify the development? It seems odd, but, are you, I want you to finish your questions before I go. Are you done? Okay, sorry. So then, if, if I may, just to come back around to my question, the reason for R2 is so that you can utilize the cottage home lot size because, I'm, math is not my strength among these people. But thirty-five times ninety is less than thirty-five hundred and the minimum lot requirement for L, for R2, single-family or tiny home is four thousand square feet? So are we, with the PUD then, are we giving like a discount on the requirement of the lot size for the open space? Or are we utilizing the cottage home lot requirement of twenty-four hundred square feet and then just building an R1 house on those? Or are we utilizing the cottage home lot requirement of twenty-four hundred square feet and then just building an R-one house on those lots?
So, yeah, I'll try and answer as best I can. So, so there's, you know, R-one zoning limits us to six point seven units per acre. We feel like we can, the comprehensive plan allows us to do a little bit more. So by means of the R-two PUD, yeah, we can, we can go, you know, with something that's similar to the cottage home, but, but not quite. You know, we, this applicant, you know, he's doing another cottage home in the city of Post Falls. It's under construction right now. And, and so there's some lessons learned there. And, and, you know, like, one of the slides I brought up was, you know, the cottage homes limits us to fourteen hundred square foot floor plans.
Right.
And, and, you know, we feel like we can do better with, you know, by bringing something that's larger and still affordable. Does that help answer your question?
I think, well, I understand that. I understand the goal. I'm just looking at the actual requirements that we have written into code and how that's applying to what you're saying that you're going to do outside of just the maximum density. So like, just looking at our land use table and zoning chart, that sort of, like I said before, it seems like R-two might not be exactly the right answer for this piece of land if you were just to ask me. But I understand that what you're trying to do is solve some problems and make some things available, and I really appreciate that. So we have to kind of look at more complex options. I just want to make sure that I'm really clear as to why we're deviating from what I feel like is the most correct fit based on our comprehensive plan. And so I just want to be sure that I have that understood so that I can be the best supporter of your project that I can be. And, and so that's sort of what I'm asking. I do have another question, though. You keep referencing an R-two PUD, but we're definitely not in a PUD hearing, we're just in annexation and zoning. So, so this PUD is already in the works and, no, okay, okay, so that's just?
No, that's, so, so the PUD, okay, I want to come back to your other point too, so please remind me if I forget. The, the whole PUD conversation came along because, you know, Mr. Segler's, you know, question about, well, what's this blob? This is just a concept that we're, that, you know, we feel is, you know, one of the potential outcomes. So that just kind of led us down that path. Trying to remember back to what you were saying a second ago. Okay, so R-two, within the comprehensive plan, you know, we feel like we could, if we're approved tonight, come forward with a plan that allows eight units per acre.
Great.
Right. Let's say, you know, city council disagrees, wants to assign us R-one zoning as well. Okay, next step for us is to go back to the drawing board and figure out, do we want to come forward in our subdivision application with something that is only six point seven units per acre? Or do we want to come forward with a cottage home SUP that would allow us the same density? Or I don't, I don't know if it could be more, but maybe. But, you know, with smaller, a small, we're limited to a smaller housing block. Those would be our options in the R-one designation.
Yes.
Did I answer?
I understand that part.
Okay.
What benefit are you getting out of the R-two? And the benefit seems to be a smaller lot size because the minimum required lot size for R-two, without, let's see, a special use permit to do townhomes, is going to be four thousand square feet.
Okay.
Unless you do twin homes, in which case it's twenty-four hundred square feet. This is minimum lot size.
Minimum lot size.
Right, but you want to do a larger home than a cottage home, which I, I think is great. But the, the dimensions that you've given for the lot that you're doing don't meet the four thousand square foot. And so that's what, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, and thank you for your patience.
Sorry, no, I'm, as everyone knows, not very good at this.
And so, so I guess that, that would be in anticipation of a PUD type of a product, yes.
That would give you leeway on your square footage because of the open space that you would give. I see, okay. Okay, so that's my question.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do have just one other question, which is, a, a large part of the presentation is creating homes that are below the median value. And is that just going to be done because we're making smaller lots, so it is inherently cheaper on each parcel? Like, each thing will be cheaper? Or is there some other mechanism that you're planning to use?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you answered or asked that question. And so, so yes, the, the large, largest component is, is, you know, the smaller lot size, slightly smaller houses. But the applicant has been talking to, you know, Paha, Panhandle Affordable Housing Alliance, who is, who is here tonight, about deed restricting some of these houses, just like was done on Miracle on Britain. And I'm not going to try and speak to that too much largely because she's here and can do a way better job. I'm just a civil engineer.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, any other questions?
I'm done, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think this is a really clever way to approach this, that we've legalized tiny homes and starter homes and with the cottage home ordinance for a reason, because we need more affordable housing. That's not like the, the low-income apartment kind of affordable housing, but they're actually attainable, single-family, ownable home. That's the starter home that I think Americans used to buy. And this is in keeping with, with what we've been trying to do in this direction because it's, it's providing that same kind of a product and just going up on the square footage of the homes, which I think is a really nice addition. So I think this doing, it's kind of like a R-one and a half compromise, still, still meeting all of our definitions of low-density and everything else. So I think this is a really neat kind of way to approach it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
People wishing to testify.
Thanks, Jen.
In favor not wishing to speak is Neil Doyle. In favor not wishing to speak, Kami Thomas, the growth here, the growth is here whether we like it or not. The best we can do is move forward with practical solutions for attainable housing before even more residents are forced to leave their home of North Idaho because of the inflated housing market. In favor wishing to speak, Casey Doyle. And folks, when you come up to speak, do they have a timer down there? There is a timer, just keep your eye on the timer and we'll warn you when you get close and let you finish your sentence. Name for the record when you get up, please.
Hi, I'm Casey Doyle, and do you need my address?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had a bunch of rebuttals in case there were people here speaking against it, but I don't think it's anything you guys haven't already heard, especially with the recent survey. But I think this is a great opportunity to create a variety of housing, even in this just little area. And I think, I'll just read at the very bottom, my statement was. The reality is that the same policies that allowed the fields around this place to be homes of the neighboring developments in 2020, I think are the same policies that should make this development a reality. And my question is, if we can't do this R-two light here, where else in Post Falls could we do it? This is already infill, there's already a thoroughfare right there, there's already services. Where else would you look? That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. In favor wishing to speak, Merle Van Houten, which you've already done. In favor not wishing to speak, Barry Sterns. In favor not wishing to speak, Nicole Shanley. In favor wishing to speak, Amy Pace.
Hi, my name is Amy Pace and I am a consultant for Paha. I'm here in favor of this development. I've had the opportunity over the last twelve months to review two-hundred-and-thirty applications from our local workforce that are looking for housing that is not available to them because of the price of housing in our county. Of that, we only have twelve units currently, or I'm sorry, thirteen units currently under contract and only twenty-eight in the Miracle on Britain community. So I'm here today advocating for this particular development because it will offer attainable housing to our local workforce, if approved.
Thank you. In favor wishing to speak, Nathan Arman.
Nathan Arman, and thank you for the opportunity, council members. I am, I've lived here my entire life and I had always planned on buying a house in the area where my family is. And it looked for quite a while like I was going to have to find somewhere else to live. And I was fortunate to get accepted by Paha through their application process. And I currently have a house being built and I would just like for that opportunity to be available to as many members of our workforce as possible. So hopefully more people can achieve that dream. Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. Wishing to speak in favor, Maggie Lyons, Lyons, sorry.
Maggie Lyons, so nice to be for you again, and thank you for the opportunity. I do want to just do a little review about Miracle on Britain. You've heard about it quite a bit. They are all deed restricted, sold below market, and they will be forever affordable for workers going forward. So these are predominantly starter homes. And when they sell, they will be preserved, they will never price to market, even though the households earn the equity and pay down their mortgage and build wealth. We are providing the opportunity for these home buyers, and you've heard from several tonight already, to build their wealth and go on to buy a market-rate home. And then, in turn, the return on investment for that is that the next family that comes into that home is also a working wage that at that point in time cannot afford the market-rate home. And these homes are specifically reserved for them. So this is an opportunity in perpetuity, as a community, as for Cootney County, to start building a perpetual inventory of affordable homes. We are doing Miracle on Britain as proof of concept. In order for us to get the housing we need, the private market has to do this. And I am so encouraged that we have this builder with the heart and the mind to understand our need. Ben Steckman has agreed to reserve ten percent of these homes for this particular model home. So we will manage the deed restrictions for him. We will find the buyers for these homes. These will be below the price even that they have as four fifty. Our buyers are ninety-five percent Cootney County residents. They are mostly two-wage-earning families, making an average combined household of a hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars in this community is not poor. We have an opportunity for this development to showcase for other builders how this can be done. And because the city, or the city of Post Falls has done such a good job with multiple product type, the land costs are a deterrent. I think there are a lot of builders out there who would be building less expensive homes, but they can't. Just be simply because of their constraints for lot sizes. So I, I'm thrilled that there's this opportunity for the private market to step up. One example, I think, will lead to many more doing the same. So thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. Neutral wishing to speak, Tatum Wolf.
Tatum Wolf? All right, hello. I was born and raised in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. My family originated in St. Mary's, Idaho. I have been renting in Coeur d'Alene for the, around the past ten years. And I currently manage a local insurance company. So for me and probably for a lot of others, the American dream is to pursue education, build a career, get married, buy a home, start a family. My parents, grandparents, their parents were able to achieve all of these milestones before the age of thirty. Today, as someone who has worked hard to meet these dreams and is fortunate to be in the upper-middle class, it's extremely difficult for me to find affordable living in the area. Despite my efforts, the rising cost of housing markets have made it harder for individuals like me to achieve these milestones that previous generations have attained. When housing becomes unaffordable to local, local workers, it doesn't just impact those workers, it impacts our entire community. Teachers, first responders, healthcare workers, insurance agents, and other who serve in our community are being priced out of the area, therefore having to move out of the area and work in other locations. Despite how hard I've worked, I felt like a disappointment. I'm embarrassed that at my age, I'm not able to start a family and a home like my parents did for me. I never imagined that I'd be able to purchase a home before thirty in this area. But thanks to Paha, I'm proud to say that I've been able to achieve this dream and Paha's made it possible for me to purchase my first home. Let's see here. I believe that expanding support for organizations like Paha can make a significant difference in providing more affordable housing options for future generations. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? That's on like pretty positive statement, and yet you marked neutral.
Well, I didn't really do my research on what the development is. All I knew was that there are going to be homes in this development that were for, in the program. So I put neutral because I didn't know if the homes, all of them, were going to be the normal housing costs and then only ten percent was going to be Paha, so I didn't really know.
Okay, sounds good. In opposition wishing to speak, Kristin Nelson.
Thank you for allowing.
It says see attached, but I'm assuming, okay, perfect. And name, name for the record, please, thank you.
Yep, my name is Kristin Nelson and I live on Tennessee Avenue. And you can understand how this is going to affect me because this is my street that's going to be continuing. And I'm very concerned about the traffic and the one-way that's going to continue through my street. And I would really, I'm not opposed to progress, but I am opposed to medium-density housing. And I'd really like you to consider the low-density, single-family homes that are already around in the surrounding area. Because this, this is going to really impact us, how many houses that are going to be put in this area. I don't, I don't like the wording R-two zoning. I'm afraid that that might get changed to higher-density housing, like on Blaze Loop, where they've put the townhomes in the housing and there's overflow parking in the streets on Blaze Loop. And so I know that those changed from single-family homes because I was on the list to buy one of those homes. And then I was priced out of them because they added ADUs to them. So I just, I just really want you to consider, you know, the people that have worked hard and that live on Tennessee. And we appreciate having the houses on Tennessee to just continue the single-family, low-density housing that's already, or in the, in the surrounding area. And I, I do work for a utility, I know how the smaller lots work, I work with them every day. There's traffic issues, there's parking issues, there's utility issues to serve these houses. And I just, I really want you guys to consider just the R-one low-density housing. Thank you.
In opposition wishing to speak, Linda Wilson.
Hi, I'm, excuse me, I'm Linda Wilson and I also live on Tennessee. I agree with Kristin to do the R-one zoning. Being on Tennessee, you know, I, I know when we moved in, you look around your area and think, well, what's going to happen in future development? So I know there's a cattle field right down the street. So, you know, you have the expectation, there, that the three brothers that sold their land, there were two of them sold their land, is where Tennessee and the other houses are. And that the third brother, if he ever sold that other cattle ranch, you would hope that the same criteria would follow forward, which would be the R-one zoning in the single-family homes. I never thought Tennessee Avenue would now be a thoroughfare. And then, I'm not sure if I totally understood the draft, the notes, but, you know, I had, I worked in public service with building and planning for another jurisdiction. And so it seems to me like when you're doing something like this, you need to me like, when you're doing something like this, you need two exits for fire reasons, so that if you have to evacuate, you know, there's two ways out from this development. Guy Road isn't a very well-built road. It's very narrow. When you get cars parked along there, you can only get one car through Guy Road. I travel it all the time. So I'm worried if the main access to this development is gonna be Tennessee Avenue, because it was, it looked like a cul-de-sac when I moved in, and I thought, well, you know, I don't think that's gonna change. You know, we're gonna have more houses. But, and I do support the idea of affordable housing. I have grandchildren that have grown up here. The husbands and wives, my granddaughter and grandson, they both work. They can't buy a house. They're paying $1,800 a month for rent. So I do support the idea of affordable housing, but I'm kinda wondering, $450,000 doesn't seem affordable to me. You know, I know that my grandkids couldn't afford that, and they work hard, and they're good kids. But anyways, I appreciate you considering my thoughts, but I really would hate to see Tennessee Avenue be, you know, a big thoroughfare with lots of cars coming through, and I'm concerned with all the children that play in the street. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. In opposition, not wanting to speak, William Appleton. I purchased my home at the end of Tennessee Avenue, because it was a dead-end street, so it was safer for my grandchildren to play. And not wishing to speak, Jeff Scott. Rebuttal. Does the applicant care to rebut anything that was stated?
All right, commissioners and Mr. Mayor. I could speak quickly to some of those concerns about traffic. Happy to answer questions about that and to go into more detail. I wish I had Mr. Manley's slide that zoomed out just a little bit more, but we'll go with this one. So I heard, you know, concerns about traffic on Tennessee. So currently, yes, Tennessee does dead-end, and I think it was always the intention that it would extend one day and connect. You know, once it connects, it's connecting to Spokane Street, which is a major collector. And I think, you know, the residents of this area under consideration tonight, as well as probably some of the people who live on Tennessee, will choose to use that connection to get onto this collector, you know, quickly, rather than navigate their way through the existing local roads. So that, as I said in my presentation, I made a brief mention about how it would actually improve traffic, and that was what I was alluding to, is I, you know, I see people using Spokane Street, you know, hopping on Spokane Street as, you know, the preferred route versus, you know, going through local roads. And I don't know exactly where, you know, that break would be, or the individual chooses to go that way. But I do foresee that being the case. And we'll get to the Guy Road improvements on the next presentation, but that won't be the narrow road that it is today. And I heard, you know, a concern from Ms. Nelson about how the R2 might get changed, as she put it. You know, when we spoke about the annexation agreement, and Mr. Manley discussed the conditions that were put in there. So again, the only way that it might get changed is if we were to come back before you guys to amend that. So, and she spoke about parking issues. I had expected that that would be another concern, too. So again, with our housing type, there it is. You know, I don't know, we're gonna at least have a single-family garage. You know, I can't say that it doesn't wind up being a two-car garage, but under this scenario, you have one in the garage, one on the driveway, and, you know, another, you know, and room for on-street parking for one more. So I feel like, you know, this does address, you know, parking issues, too, in a way that a townhome product could not. So I think with that, I'll open it up to you guys again for any other questions, but that hopefully addresses some of those concerns.
Any additional questions?
Just to be clear, then, R2 by right, well, what you're asking for is essentially 54 units that you could put on this one piece of property, based on the eight units per acre.
Eight. Was it 50?
So you could have 54.
Six.
But I think you said that you're only doing 47.
So, okay. Did I interrupt you?
Yeah, sorry. That's okay. R1 would only allow you to do 40. So I just wanna help reiterate that I understand the concerns about R1 versus R2, but I think that you've been very generous in your speaking, that you're really going for an R1 feel, but in order to really make it worth making houses slightly more affordable for those of us that are in Post Falls and looking for a home, you're backing it off a bit. And even with what you're allowed to do based on the annexation agreement, you're even lower than that. And so you are actually close to R1 density, including dedicated open space.
So, yeah, this one here, you know, this layout, it does have 47 lots. And, but it doesn't, you know, we're not requesting that tonight. You know, we'll figure out just how to, you know, create that layout, you know. What we want to do is to give ourselves the opportunity of the density that's prescribed in the comprehensive plan. Yeah. Is that...
Okay. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
With that, I'll close the public hearing. First question is whether or not annexation is appropriate.
Whether or not annexation is in the best interest of the city.
I would say that it is in this particular project. I've spoken on this particular kind of county pocket before, where I like when we can annex land into our utility system and our road and safety pedestrian systems without expanding the footprint of the geographical area of the city. So I think it fits that for me.
I would agree. I think it's a reasonable request to annex into the city. It makes sense for what they wanna use it for, and just that connectivity down Spokane Street with the Prairie Falls development seems quite reasonable that we would have more sidewalk there.
The right-of-way is worth mentioning as well, too, since that's on, I believe, a major collector. So having the right-of-way to be able to maintain that road and add turn lanes where we need to gives us flexibility for making sure we're not overburdened with traffic in the future.
Is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan?
It is. R2 is an implementing zone of the low-density residential category of the focus area, and the limitation to eight units per acre brings it down to being definitely within the bounds of the future land use map.
I would slightly amend that sentence, in my opinion, to say that R2 does not strictly fit based on the comprehensive plans, just looking at the surrounding land uses. I don't think that it's appropriate, but given what the developer is requesting to do with that land and the annexation restrictions or agreements, I think that it does actually fit into that area.
I would agree. I think the reality of it is, is when you look at it against the railroad tracks, it is a unique piece of property, as far as shape. I like the idea of the annexation agreement with R2. And frankly, I'd like to see this option maybe a little bit more. I think back, my first home was not even 900 square feet. We had 120-pound ground paronies dog that lived there. That's a whole 'nother story. But the reality of it is, it is a good fit, and I think it fits very well.
Okay. Is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
I would say it is, and I would agree with you, Councilor Sigler, on a strict interpretation of R1 versus R2. I would definitely lean more toward R1, but I do feel that this is a, strikes a really good balance between the offering that R1 proposes and then kind of the cost benefit of a higher-density plat. So I do like what Randy mentioned. It's almost like an R1.5. So, you know, it is one of our challenges in our city to provide quality, single-family homes that are owned by that occupant. But at the same time, I really like seeing that the effort is made to make a quality product, that it isn't just, you know, a really small entry-level type home. So I do think that this zone designation is correct, considering the allowances that the developer is willing to give us.
And I think you also mentioned sort of that Policy 9 infill county island in the previous...
Yes. For policies, we can point to sidewalks, pedestrian connectivity. We can point to right-of-way acquisition along roadways. We can point to having a diversity of housing options in the city. These are all goals and policies that are relevant.
Clean space, open space.
All right. Finally, does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the city?
None of them raised any objection. I'll weigh in real quick, now that the questions are answered, and that's that oftentimes we see people come in with an annexation request like this for something other than R1, and it's just to pack as many units in as they can, for obvious reasons. People are there to make profit. Higher the density, the more you sell, the more opportunity for profit there is. I think this is a great balance. I think, in all honesty, it's, first of all, I'm an R1 guy, and I like large lots, okay? But that's not what reality is anymore. In order for people to have affordable homes, they've gotta be less expensive, which oftentimes equates to smaller homes, smaller lots. And I think with the housing needs that we have in our area, we have to do something to try to meet those needs. I think that's been indicative of what the city has done over the past many years, and especially now, is we're trying to be creative, and it's working with developers who are coming in and asking for something that's a bit out of the ordinary, you know, an R2, but willingly agreeing to restricting the number of units. Folks, we don't see that too often. And the fact that, as Maggie Lyons says, that the developers agreed to have 10% of the homes in this particular annexation request and development deed restricted, I think that's truly indicative of your interest and willingness to help create and maintain affordable housing. So I'm not gonna get to vote on this one, but I would just like to say that I support and I appreciate the flexibility that you're showing in this regard.
Having just went through the housing needs assessment and then see this come along is pretty fortuitous. It's like, okay, great, this seems to be the fit and what we're talking about.
Let's have one more comment. I would just like to say I greatly appreciate all of you here today to give us your input on what you're looking for, you know, the positive and negative about it, specifically about the negative impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. We are very aware that when we do annex or even change a zoning designation within existing neighborhoods, that it does have effect on you, on your neighbors and the people who have lived there. However, in this particular case, I think the rebuttal to that issue was very well answered, because of the infrastructure that will be added into. I think, one, it will be a good alternative to go towards Spokane Street, and you may even see a reduction in traffic that goes by in front of your house because of that. So I just wanted to point that out, that it is really important for us to hear from you, and I appreciate all of you here tonight.
And if I may on that, I truly understand, Mr. Mayor, the love of R1, because that is also mine. And looking around that area and thinking it should all be R1, I don't wanna say the truth of the matter is, but strictly speaking, we have to go by what the comprehensive plan sets out and what is listed in the future land use map, and then we are only allowed to evaluate any requests based on the three criteria that you saw come in front of us. So technically speaking, R2, with all of its rights, could have been requested, and they could have given no information about what was happening. So again, I think, as echoed by council, I am so thankful that there is a developer and a landowner that is willing to work with the city and work with council, so that we can take the comments of residents and the concerns of residents and be able to work with them before we come to council, where we are only allowed to look at the comprehensive plan and look at the three criteria to make this decision. That being said, we are in a comprehensive plan review period, and so it is something that residents have the opportunity to speak to, and we would highly encourage that if you are unhappy or have concerns with the process that you saw or the criteria that you saw, there is actually a current opportunity to make a difference there and to have your voice heard, and I would strongly encourage you to do so. So anyway, I appreciate, like the rest of the council, the input, and then also the developer and our staff really working hard to make this be something that is as advantageous as possible to all parties involved, as much as the law allows us to do. Field.
Anyone want a full motion?
Is this one motion, or can we, does it have to be two?
No, so we'll have to have the public hearing on the second motion, again.
No, I mean for the annexation and with the zoning.
You can combine those.
Okay, all right. I move to approve Steckman annexation, A-N-N-X...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four dash oh-nine, and to approve R2 zoning, finding that the zoning meets the approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code, as outlined in our deliberation and direct staff to prepare a reasoned decision.
Second.
Motion second. Quick question. Field, do we need to, I know you adopted, but do we need to specify in there the restriction of units, or is that incorporated in his motion?
So when you approve the annexation number, that includes that development agreement?
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Further questions? Roll call, please.
Sigler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sigler?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Wish passes. Thank you. Next item up tonight is the Elfers annexation, file number A-N-N-X dash twenty-four dash ten, and I will open the public hearing.
All right, so Elfers annexation. The owner at the time this was, Cooper Family Trust, supposedly. There may be a difference now, but, yeah, that's who we have on record. Applicant is still the Van Houten consultant and design. This particular annexation request is for approximately 4.89 acres. It would be 5.2 acres with the right-of-way. And like last one, they are looking at applying that medium-density residential R2 zoning. Here's the project location. As you see here, it's just west of the Steckman. There's the adjacency to Guy Road, and it's just in the southeast corner of Guy Road and Fisher. Kind of got on over zoning already with the previous. Much of the information about the site conditions are similar. I already mentioned the Guy Road, and then there would be that right-of-way that would come along with Guy Road. Here's the future land use map. You can see it's still in that sea of low-density residential. Same elements in the previous hearing about the eight dwelling units per acre, as well as being in the central prairie. Same elements as the previous one, due to proximity being adjacent, about the pedestrian connectivities, the transportation connectivity, and with annexations assisting with that. Here shows the relation to Steckman. Looking at the housing, same housing policies as the previous one. Just didn't wanna repeat everything. One difference, no difference in the demonstrable impact of all the, had the same comments, being neutral. They'll review it permitting or no utilities in the area. The development agreement, they are similar. They both have the eight dwelling units per acre max. They agree to single-family. There is one difference, based off of the public hearing at P&amp;Z, we threw in that there'd be no CO shall be attained until the road connection to Spokane Street has been established. So that was addressing the concern of this one came online before the other one, and then it wouldn't allow people to go easterly. So we threw that condition. It'd bring that assurances in that you would be able to go easterly to Spokane Street. Any questions for me?
Question, Mr. Manley.
How much of Guy gets fixed and to what extent, or developed and to what extent?
I may be able to swing on this one. So you'll be getting the... I may be able to swing on this one. So, you'll be getting the majority of, I think, usually it's center line plus 10, usually, and then you'd get the frontage improvements on the east, so the east side of Guy Road, plus center line plus 10.
Is that correct?
So, it would only be the east side of the street?
Well, the center, there'd be some, the center too, center line plus 10, so, and then the east side, yeah.
Okay.
You're correct, though, the west side, as far as the sidewalk and the other stuff wouldn't come on with, and the curb wouldn't be involved on the west side.
So, would we anticipate that that road would become wide enough to the comments, to concerns that we know people have, that a car could be parked on one side, and you could still have appropriate through traffic?
I don't foresee parking. I'll go ahead and let Rob answer this one. You asked enough questions. You kicked me to the curb.
I'm so sorry.
My limitations were found.
Ah, dang it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Robert Paulis, City Engineer, again. The short piece of Guy Road that is in the county right now is 24 feet wide, which by our standard would not allow for any parking whatsoever. With annexation, we'd get the rights-of-way on the east side of the roadway, and that would allow us that when subdivision would happen, or development on that property, we would end up with a minimum 28-foot-wide roadway, which would allow for parking on one side. Considering how close the fence is on the other, we may want to just keep that short section, no parking, but that's something that I want to see a little bit more, go out, look at the site, et cetera. When it's fully built out, it'll be a 32-foot-wide roadway, which is our standard two-lane road with parking on both sides.
So, we would develop 27 feet of that roadway with this development, because we get half plus 10?
So, you already have a 24-foot-wide paved roadway out there.
Uh-huh.
The center line is, so you have that center line plus 10 already, with the 12-foot lane on the west side of the roadway. So, they would be widening to the east, the remaining portion, putting in the curb and gutter. So, you're only ending up, right now, gaining about five or six feet of roadway, enough to accommodate technically for parking on one side. It may not make practical sense to do that, though.
Hmm. Our right-of-way is going to be center line plus 10 to the west, and that will...
To the east.
Oh.
The, to the west of Guy Road is the land that's currently being used with...
Well, the center line of the road, plus 10 feet of the road. No?
That's already developed. That's asphalt road. So, they're going to be dedicating rights-of-way on the east side of the roadway.
What is the plus 10, then?
So, the plus 10...
It's not the 10 feet of the road.
The plus 10 is intended when you're going into an area where you do not have a developed roadway. You're in a county portion, and it's a dirt road. In order to make sure we have emergency services, instead of, so that they aren't just building half of roadway, which for residential street is 16 feet.
Right.
We make them do that additional 10 feet, which is the other side of the road, in this case would be the west side.
Right.
So that you make enough roadway so that emergency vehicles can get through. When the project, Peregrine, I think it's Peregrine Place, went in with Tennessee Avenue, they were required to put in the 24-foot-wide asphalt piece to allow for the emergency services access.
So, it will just be that standard of road, built to the north?
They would just be building their standard on their side, yes.
To the north, okay. And we cannot restrict the parking to the west side of the street because it's county?
With this annexation, we'd be taking in all of the rights-of-way for Guy Road, so we could restrict the parking, and I would restrict the parking on the west side in that short piece. There's not enough room for parking.
Thank you.
Without blocking traffic.
It takes me four questions to get to my limit as well, Mr. Manley. I'm so sorry. Mine just started out in the beginning. Okay, that was my concern, is that are we able to actually mitigate parking through the whole road if we are only gaining rights-of-way on the east side?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Manley or Mr. Paulis? Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Applicant, you're done, John, correct?
Yeah.
You're done, John. Make sure, wanted to make sure, John. Thought you might want to come up and answer anymore, before you had to sit down.
All right, well, good evening again, council members and Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this time we're here to discuss 3530, North Guy Road, to be annexed into the city with the requested R2 zone. And similar to Mr. Manley's presentation, this is a lot of the same. I will start here. We've got 4.9 acres that we are going to request into the R2 zone. The owner is Cooper Family Trust, and I can shed a little bit more light on what's in play here. The Cooper Family Trust and the Cooper Family have owned this property for a very long time, decades. They, what's happened since, back up even further, when this was first brought to the city with an annexation application, this piece was, you know, a separate developer than the Blackwell Homes. But they weren't going to close on the property until, you know, after annexation. That's still true. The only difference is now, it's no longer that original applicant, you know, who was going to purchase the property from the Cooper Family Trust. It's Blackwell Homes. So, Blackwell Homes is now in position to acquire this on, when the property closes. So, had that been the case, when this application was sent into the city, we would have just done one hearing, and we would all be home by now. But we're just going to go through this again real quick. And the difference is, is that now, it not only, you know, thanks to that condition that was placed in the annexation agreement, but, you know, we have a developer who's controlling all three of these parcels, and, you know, he's, you know, deciding the construction sequencing. So, you know, of course, you know, it does make sense to start over here on the east side, make those connections, and work our way west. And we no longer have to worry about two developers on two different timelines. So, that really made things run a lot smoother and address some of the concerns that were brought up in P&amp;Z. Because, you know, then in that, at that time, the concern was, you know, that this particular Guy Road piece did not stand alone, and should it go forward prior to the one we just heard, you know, there would be no connection to a collector road, and traffic was a concern. All that's been addressed. All that's, you know, no longer, you know, I think of any concern. So, here's yet a little glimpse of that Guy Road piece. We're going to expand that road, like Mr. Paulis said. It'll get widened out that five or so feet, curb, sidewalk, to the city standard, and the west side will remain as is until that side is developed. We have all of our same goals for affordable housing, neighborhood compatibility, you know, the limited city impact. We're working with the same product here. It was, you know, the same idea. It was just, you know, when this was applied for at the city, we had two different applicants. So, largely, this is all the same things that we've just discussed. You know, we're looking at a comprehensive plan that has low-density residential, eight dwelling units per acre is what's prescribed for this, just like we described before, Central Prairie. That's stressing that land use values are increasing, and we need higher-density housing. So, I don't want to dwell on all this. This is, you know, very much all the same information because we're going to be proposing the same product. And, you know, here we are again. You know, we're not requesting R1 zoning, because, you know, that feels like, raises the price to, some people get priced out of the market. You know, eight dwelling units per acre is what the comprehensive plan prescribes for this, in the future land use map, and that's what we're willing to condition ourselves to. We're willing to condition ourselves to single-family homes only, and we're not seeking the full R2 density of 10.9 units per acre. So, you know, again, same product as before. We're not talking about duplexes, twin homes, townhomes, multifamily, you know, none of that. We're just doing single-family homes. You know, cottage homes, tiny homes, those are other kinds of single-family homes, I guess, but again, we feel like we can do better. We want to bring something that's slightly larger. We don't want to limit ourselves to that 1,400-square-foot maximum floor plan. So, all of that same conversation still applies. You know, this is a concept of what it could like, look like when we bring it in for subdivision. So, you know, here we, we were kind of playing with this idea of as we continue across with our public road to Guy Road, we have a little private road that comes in and connects and goes out. Dedicated open space, you know, for our, this is again a PUD product that we're, you know, just conceptualizing. And, you know, one of the things we were telling it is, maybe we should, you know, look at making some of these a little bit wider, you know, to give, you know, a better feel, as we can blend. And, you know, here we have, you know, 38 lots on, what did I say, 4.9 acres. So, I think we're pushing up against that maximum 8.0 units per acre on that one, but I'll let you do the math.
No, don't.
All right. So, yeah, I feel like we're looking at the same goals and policies here. So, we can go into those again if you want, but I'll just kind of cruise past that. And, you know, we're achieving our goals and objectives in the same way. You know, let's condition ourselves to the eight units per acre maximum. You know, let's, you know, condition ourselves to no multifamily housing, single-family housing only. We're trying to achieve some sort of scale here that gives that balance of affordable, you know, homeownership, but, you know, with some, you know, blending of, you know, neighborhood compatibility, some sort of scale that achieves that. So, at P&amp;Z, you know, we agreed to the conditions that we've discussed, eight units per acre, single-family residences only. And as John pointed out in the annexation agreement, it does state that we must connect to Spokane Street before we connect to Guy Street. So, that motion passed with a split vote. The main concern there was, you know, does this product stand alone? And a couple of them decided that no, it didn't, because, again, we were, this was, had to be looked at standalone. It was a separate applicant. And, you know, as I've said, now, if this were to go back into the annexation application with the city today like it did in, you know, November, it would all be, you know, one application. We'd only be having one hearing because it's one applicant. So, that's how that was resolved. Both annexations are now controlled by the same developer. So, I'm going to open it up to questions from there.
Mr. Van Houten, are any of these proposed units designated as, with 10% for deed-restricted properties, or is that just only on the first annexation?
I believe so. I wish the applicant was here to answer that directly, but my, that's my, maybe Maggie could speak to that, too, since...
To your knowledge, are any of these lots, is the 10% deed-restricted?
Why don't we have her come up during public comment?
Public comment.
So, yeah, we'll, so we'll just let Maggie see if she's talked to Mr. Steckman with Blackwell Homes about that, over all, you know, all, both applications, or just the one?
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have a question about the private road.
Sure.
And I know that's just kind of an initial idea or rendering, but is that privately maintained, then, or would it be publicly?
Yeah, that would be privately maintained, then.
Okay.
Since you have that up, I was going to actually ask the question. Do you know estimation of what with that private road would be?
Yeah, yeah, I do. So, let me see if I have that in my slides here, because we modeled this off of that cottage home private road that we're building off of Serenga and Legion. There it is. So, so, I mean, again, this is an annexation hearing, but I'm happy to just, you know, I geek out on this stuff, sorry. So, this is what's happening, you know, public road on the top, private road, you know, wide enough, you know, 25-foot top back a curve, five-foot sidewalk, sway along one side.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
How does that, how does the private road in the HOA fit into the idea of having houses in a neighborhood that are affordable or attainable?
Oh, because you're saying like there's HOA dues and maintenance and fees. You know, and I, you know, again, if the applicant was here, maybe you could address that, but I don't really structure that part of it, sorry.
No, that's fair, that's fair. I do like the idea of a private road because it takes the liability off the city, and as we know, streets are expensive.
Yeah.
The only caveat, and we've got one close to where I live, is that they've come to us about three or four times, asking if we can take it over.
Yeah.
Because they can't afford it.
Yeah.
And it's tough, because then the residents have to bring it up to city standard, so it's tough, tough for the property owners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's all right, thank you.
Bear with me as I try to get creative reading from both.
Did you put, you haven't closed the public hearing, sorry.
Thank you. No, it's not, because we're still in public hearing.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Are we allowing front doors on Guy Road? Would that be an allowable thing?
Members of the council, Robert Paulis, Robert Paulis, City Engineer, with the designation of a local residential street for Guy Road, driveways would be allowed onto Guy Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, here's what I'm going to do. Amy Pace, you spoke in favor of the first one. You've listed both annexations. Do your comments carry over to this annexation request as well?
Thank you.
Mr. Van Houten, you've already spoken. Tatum Wolf, do your comments carry over to this annexation as well?
She's gone.
Did she leave? I assume they do. Maggie, you're not signed up for this annexation, but can we ask her to come up and address that one, the question I asked?
Was that on the 10%? Was that on the 10% on this one?
Deed restriction, yeah. And the question, Maggie, is, has the developer talked to you at all about restricting, deed-restricting 10% of the homes in this development as well?
We have. We've talked about the entire development, and the ideal, and the developer agrees with this, is that these are peppered throughout the entire development. They are not all together.
Okay.
So, there's spattered. And then I can answer the question on the HOA.
Okay, great.
If you'd like, okay.
Sure, yeah.
Sure. So, because we have an HOA in Britain, and now that we're getting ready to sell the homes, we've had to start sorting this through, right, because this is so groundbreaking. But the HOA for the deed restriction agreement, we added a term to the HOA, so the CCNRs for Britain, that in the event there becomes a conflict between the HOA and the deed restriction agreement, the deed restriction agreement will prevail because of the, our need to ensure the deed restrictions long-term. And our deed restrictions are 99 years. Did that answer your question?
No, my question was more about how expensive HOAs are, and how expensive it is to maintain a private road.
Okay.
And how does that, how does that align with the goal of creating attainable or affordable housing? But I don't know that that, yeah, anyway, so that's okay.
Our HOAs are going to be quite low.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thanks.
Kristin Nelson, you spoke in opposition. Do your comments carry over? Thank you. Linda Wilson, same, thank you. And William Appleton did not wish to speak, but he is also, his comments would carry over. He isn't opposed. Jeff Scott, again, did not wish to speak, and he was opposed on both. Bill Guy wishes to speak and is neutral.
Well, I'm kind of in a hard, between a hard place and a rock here, because I'm selling a piece of property to the same people.
Bill, would you give us your name, just for the record, please?
And I told Ben the other day that I wasn't going to badmouth their deal, but I told him I also didn't like anything they were doing, because I think that all these folks that live on the south side of that property, they ought to have a little consideration. They bought that property knowing that someday somebody was going to develop behind them, but they didn't expect to have two-story houses 10 foot from the fence. So, when they want to go out and have a barbecue in the backyard, they got people looking down on top of them. They're just losing all their privacy. top of them. It's, they're just losing all their privacy. And they paid good money for those houses, too. And every time you pick up the paper, you hear, we got to have affordable housing. That horse left the barn a long time ago in Idaho. These houses may be cheaper, but they're not going to be affordable to some guy making twenty dollars an hour. And you're just going to create a disaster area. They're putting that many houses on that little old ground. You got, old people aren't going to buy those houses because they can't climb the stairs to go to bed. And young people aren't going to buy it because there's no place for the kids to play. I think they ought to build bigger houses and fewer of them. And they'll still sell, they might be more money, but there's plenty of people coming in here with the money to buy them. And they, I make it clear, too, that my side of Guy Road is not going to be developed until I'm gone. So it'll be, I hope, a few more years. But it's just that, I don't know, that little narrow street they're putting on the south side of it there, was that going to be a private road or a public street? Who's going to clear the snow on that? And God save the plowman, it has to do it. The streets already in these developments aren't wide enough, and they're going to make that one look like, by the drawing, about half the width of a normal street. And like everybody says, they're only going to have room for one car in the driveway because you'd go out there now and look through some of them housing developments, and you drive by and the garages are full of their personal belongings and the cars sit out in the street. I drive a big Ford pickup and a Lincoln Town Car, and I couldn't get them both in any of these garages that they're putting up on these houses. I understand it's required to have a garage, but the garages aren't big enough for two big cars. But, of course, most people nowadays drive small cars. But I don't know. I'm all for them putting Tennessee Avenue out on the Spokane Street. I think that'll make my place a little easier to get to from town, a little faster, since they closed Guy Road. But I don't know. It's just, I've trucked all my life. I've drove over every state in the Union, and I've seen these developments after they're twenty years old, and the people haven't kept them up, and they're just look like junkyards, dead disaster areas. And if you don't keep the bicycle and the lawnmower put away, your yard looks like a junkyard. And it's just, the yards they got on these houses nowadays aren't, aren't big enough for kids to play in, so they play in the street. And now they're going to put smaller yards on these houses. And so I realize, I think we're spinning on our wheels right now because you've already, and it's in the other side, and they're going to develop it all as one piece. So that's all I had to say.
Thanks, Mr. Guy.
Thank you, Bill. Very well said.
In opposition, excuse me, sir, sir, please, thank you. Mr. Guy, it was good to see you again, by the way. It was good to see you again. It's been many years since we've seen you here.
Yeah. Do you guys consider my rent on the north side for your sewer pipe?
In opposition and not wishing to speak is Deb Thomas. This has always been zoned R1, low-density, single-family detached. R2 is not comprehensive plan. There are only nine homes on south side, only five homes on north side. South side lots are approximately seventy-four hundred square feet. North side lots range eighty-four hundred square feet to half acre. Allowing medium density with four thousand square foot lots is not compatible to neighborhood. Lots should be minimum sixty-five hundred square foot lots with R1 zoning remaining. For any two-story houses, there should be significant setbacks like forty feet to help maintain some semblance of privacy for current residents. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Kimberly Cummings. I'm strongly opposed to rezoning so closely to already established neighborhoods. This will decrease our property values and be dangerous with increased traffic. There's not enough parking. What rates will, what rules will be enforced to ensure no parking on our streets or using our common space? Not wishing to speak, and it's not marked, but I'm thinking it's opposition, Ren Fuglsta? If I mispronounce that, I apologize. With the streets wide enough for parking on each side and road for cars driving in each direction, question mark. Blanton and Tennessee are not wide enough. Traffic volume, period. With ninety, ninety-seven houses at two cars per house, one hundred and ninety-four additional cars in the area, even one car per ninety-seven is a huge number. Wishing to speak in opposition, Wendy Graham.
Hi, I'm Wendy Graham. I live at thirty-six eighty-two North Guy Road, which is on the corner of Guy and Ashworth, a block down from the proposed annexation. I oppose the R2 designation on the basis of compatibility or continuity, aesthetics and traffic. Friends who have visited our home in Post Falls have commented on how quiet and attractive the neighborhood is. As we've already discussed, it's already been put forward that this, this area is R1. Usually the quiet, the neighborhood is quiet at night with the exception of Fourth of July. I oppose the R2 designation because it, because of the density that is being offered here as something preferable, and I don't think it's preferred for this area. I question whether this is the pocket of land that we should be putting this many houses on. I am not opposed to affordable housing. The second and stronger reason for my opposition is aesthetics. If you go by there, you can see the peaceful pasture within the side of our front porch, cows moving here and there, chewing their cud, and across Guy Road, that bright red barn and a large lot with at least a dozen ninety-foot trees. Many birds inhabit those trees, including a pair of hawks. And our view of the hills to the south is unrestricted. And I'm concerned that these aesthetics will be marred with the crush of homes and the ensuing heavy residential traffic. The trees lopped down, the bird habitat wiped out, another peaceful portion of Post Falls overrun. This leads to my greatest concern, which is traffic. Looking at this picture here, I don't think these roads were really designed for this much traffic. We have talked about the access. There's, there's going to be access onto Tennessee. My daughter lives on Tennessee Street with two young children. Now she can anticipate increased traffic. And Guy Road, the exit on the west is quite narrow, but they're going to widen that slightly. But in addition, the cars turning left out of Guy Road will have to meander through the neighborhood to get to Grange. Cars turning right onto Guy Road will either turn onto Fisher, which is another narrow road, passing houses of families with children, or continue on and turn right onto Ashworth, where my house is on the corner. Our neighborhood, neighborhood has quite a few children who enjoy the sidewalks. They cross the streets to visit friends. And then the third access point, which is really part of the Stegman annexation, that exit east onto Spokane, I feel this gets a little dicey there because there isn't a middle turn lane at that point. And I think there is a possibility of traffic backing up around that railroad crossing as cars are trying to turn onto the proposed development, as well as traffic backing up in the development itself and the heavy morning and evening drive times. Think of it this way, ninety, one hundred houses, ninety cars, but if they have two cars, maybe that's a hundred and eighty cars. So we have a hundred and eighty cars, maybe ninety cars, going out in the morning and then returning at night. But if they're anything like my family, they're not just taking one trip a day. Maybe they're taking two or three trips a day. So the additional traffic will be detrimental to our neighborhood. That means thirty to forty additional cars going in any of the directions, two, three, four times a day. So I respectfully request that the designation be changed to R1 to reduce the negative impact of the new development. And I also request that some of the trees be left standing. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, and your timing was spot on. Four minutes. Oppose and wishing to speak, Karen Olson.
Good evening. I talk loud, so I hope I don't go over the top. Thanks for letting me speak. I am going to say upfront, I typed this up. Oh, I'm sorry. Karen Olson. I live in Post Falls on Guy Road. A lot of folks have already spoken and made some of my points already. Still my thunder. They're better at math than I am, too. And before I get going, two questions. How much time do I have?
Four minutes, and you should have a timer. Is there a timer there? It should be.
Oh, okay. And I'm using it already. And thank you for liking R1s just like I do. So here we go. I have lived here in Post Falls for five years. I have seen the growth in Cootney County, the surrounding cities, as well as the city of Post Falls. I was fortunate to have the guidance of local real estate agents with more than twenty years of experience assist me with the purchase of my home. They provided me with some thoughts and questions concerning the proposed annexation. Their concerns coincide with mine. Density. These agents gave me three words to consider. The first two were overcrowding and the increase of crime. The proposed annexation is requesting that the parcels be zoned as R2, which will increase the density. Across the street from the parcel on Guy Road is a neighborhood that is bracketed by Fisher Avenue and Ashworth Lane. The land is similar in size, and I'm being generous here, to the two properties looking for new zone designation back to back. There are thirty-six homes on this land, yet the development wants to squeeze eighty-two or so dwellings with one car garage each into a comparable-sized piece of side-by-side property. This will amount to more than two times the dwellings when compared. And we've already talked about how many cars that's going to be. I've got a hundred and sixty-four to two hundred and forty-six. That doesn't include RVs, boats and ATVs, which may come in the HOAs. I don't know. But parking with only one garage is going to be on the street. And even if they have the option, and I've heard that there might be a two-car garage home, it's not going to mitigate the surplus. Infrastructure. Again, we've talked about the, the roads. And in here, in the notice of hearing, it talks about the same is primarily applied in areas suitable for residential development, where such residentially designed areas, designated areas, are readily serviced by the collector and arterial streets. And at this point in time, no one's convinced that the streets that we have now, even with Tennessee opening, are going to handle the, the traffic that's going to be coming down our road. No pun intended. And finally, compatibility. The word is used twice in the notice of hearing. The development, development in no way is compatible. It does not add to the aesthetics. It will detract. Speculation is rampant as to what impact the construction of dissimilar dwellings and the massive increase in traffic will have on the appreciated value of our existing homes. And I'm wondering, does the city of Post Falls have any studies or data that speaks to this important concern? To conclude, it is given that profit and future revenue is a factor in the decision-making process. I want to believe, though, I truly want to believe, that our government agencies, when weighing and assessing these projects, will not make money, the central component to the final outcome. I want to believe that our concerns matter to you and carry weight. My neighbors and I are asking you to keep in mind what is best for our community, to utilize circumspection and prudence when making the decision.
And you did well, too. Five, four minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, in opposition, wishing to speak, Michelle Missamore.
Hello. My name is Michelle Missamore, and I just wanted to say that I echo and adopt what has already been said in opposition to this annexation by Mr. Guy, by Wendy, and by Karen that just spoke. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen, care to rebut?
All right, Council members and Mr. Mayor, I do my best to listen to the concerns of, of the neighbors. I'll do my best to, to address them. Again, I hear a lot about traffic, about the congestion, increased traffic to Guy. I think, though, the one of the reasons that this, this particular spot of land works so well is the connection to Spokane Street that, that'll draw this, the, the bulk of this out without impacting any of the other local roads. I think have, if you put it, you know, in, in, in a mix of local road, you know, connections with no major outlet like, like Spokane Street, then it probably doesn't work. But, you know, as Mr. Paulus said at the beginning of this, the beginning of the last hearing, that the, the volume for Spokane Street is currently forty-four to fifty percent of what it is projected. And the, you know, they operate with a ninety percent threshold. So it sounds like the, the city's traffic data would say that this, that this, the traffic plan is, is working and that this can be supported. You know, I hear concerns about aesthetics. Yes, I find it hard when, when farm homes disappear, too. But this is a classic case of infill development and, which is encouraged within the city, especially when it comes to annexation. So what else did we have? Yeah, I just wanted to touch again on the, the success that we've heard about the miracle in Britain, the people that we've heard tonight that are benefiting from that, that housing development and from Maggie herself, who spearheaded that. The success there is something that we're seeking to emulate. And, you know, yes, those products do wind up being a little bit smaller. And I think one of the reasons that the PUD product would be a good fit here was because, you know, along with these smaller-sized lots, you're going to have dedicated open space that does provide opportunity for children to play in their own neighborhood. So I, I feel like that's a benefit to having PUD is, is that common open space where people can play. And as I was also listening, I, I started thinking back to what I saw in the, the needs analysis that the city just adopted. There's, in that, that housing needs analysis, homeownership strategy number one is starter homes for affordability. Homeownership strategy number two is titled diverse housing types to meet needs. So those, those are two of those strategies that we're directing, are directly addressing. And, you know, I, I see in, in strategy number two findings that the, the consultant that was hired by the city said, there's no evidence that mixed-use type neighborhoods reduce home values. And I don't know what they based that on, but I did find it was interesting that, that made it into the study. So, any questions?
Questions, Van Houten.
I do have a question about the timeframe of build-out.
Sure.
Is this project, I know, I know we have a condition of completion of the access to Spokane Street before the other half is done.
Yeah.
More specifically, with the HOA structure, are we still, with the common area maintenance plan, how long from, say, from the first time we build a house in, in the east portion until complete build-out, are those two parcels considered the same development? What I'm trying to avoid is if, if the eastern portion of the development is, is started first, we have that, that pretty sizable open space that is going to be under HOA maintenance. Typically, the maintenance does not transfer over to the HOA until there's a certain number of completion, right? So in an entire project, if it's over a five- or six-year span, it's, and we've seen this happen before in other areas of the city, there are those HOA maintained, supposedly maintained, open spaces that are not maintained by the developer because of the, because they're not transferred over to the HOA. So my question is, do you have an estimation of build-out time if we were to approve these? Are they being treated separately to where we've reached that seventy-five percent completion of, of build-out? So then the common area maintenance would be transferred to the HOA separately, or are they being treated as one build-out for that HOA?
Okay. Yeah, I'll do my best. And I might have to, to pull in John to, to help me out here. But, so, so the, now that, that all of these, you know, both, both applications are by the same developer, he is considering doing some sort of phased development, you know, not doing all of it, you know, at this year, let's say. But, yeah, kind of east half first roughly, and, you know, west later, next year, something like that. Market conditions going to... know, west later, next year, something like that. Market conditions control that, but, you know. So, you know, in that first phase, yes, there would be open space, you know, and I, and this is where I'm going to maybe draw on John's expertise. I don't know exactly, you know, what levers the city, you know, has in their PUD agreement that, are you nodding like you can help me out?
And again, just to remind, we're considering the annexation and the criteria associated with the annexation.
Would you go ahead and get this question answered, though?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So, yeah, in most agreements, there is ways to put conditions in that where you can control the timing of the improvements of open spaces. As far as when that gets conveyed over to an HOA, that's a lot of times determined as more of a private matter, that the city doesn't involve in the timing of that. I can confer with legal on that particular aspect.
Yeah, it's generally a private agreement that is between, is a privately legal agreement.
So we really have no purview on enforcement on those open spaces?
On the timing of the conveyance, I think, to the HOA on that aspect. But as far as sometimes there's been agreements of like, if, like, usually they're larger developments, like an eight-phase development. Sometimes what's occurred in the past is phase six or seven, the open space comes online, that you've built all these houses, and there's no open space for those houses, for them to relieve themselves, so to speak, with some outdoor recreation amenities. So we have included, like, well, no later, you can't, by the end of phase two, you've got to have the open space developed and done. And so those are some control measures we've done in the past for, on the PUD side, and as well as on the annexation side.
Yeah, I think I would like to, I would encourage that, I guess, you know, as far as phasing, just to make sure that those open spaces are maintained as the project continues forward.
Councilor Ziegler.
Built-in maintain, yeah.
This is apropos of nothing, but I can tell you that there's a bill currently pending in the legislature that will shorten the timeframe for when the developer has to turn the development over to the owner's association. I believe that is likely to pass. If it hasn't already, I've sort of been watching it. I haven't been watching it super closely because it doesn't directly impact us, but I suspect coming out of this session, you will see developments turned over to the owner's association sooner.
Thank you.
I have a question, maybe not necess, maybe for the applicant, also maybe for council. So, based on your question, then, since this is still technically two hearings, we are annexing in two sites, would it be a deterrent for the first one if this wasn't annexed and approved until the first one was built out? It's something that we've seen done on the 41, where a piece of property is not annexed or zoned until the more of the development has reached that area, and we can see more of the impact that happens. So I wonder if that might be a consideration to council or consideration to the developer if, since you already have to do the previous piece of property first, based on the restrictions in the annexation agreement, that we wait on this piece of property until we see more of the ramifications, especially since, as we've noted, Miracle on Britain is a proof of concept. So we haven't seen what that actually looks like yet, and there have been many concerns from residents. Actually, thought the comment about the size of Ashworth and Fisher versus this, and the comparison to lots was interesting. But I guess that's a question to you as what the developer would be willing to do, and then council's thoughts and considerations on that idea.
Yeah. So, as you first started posing that question, I started coming from, you know, an engineering perspective. That's where my suit lies. And the thing that popped into my head is, you know, even, you know, that phase line for the first phase wouldn't be just this part here, and then the part that we're discussing now comes later. It would actually be kind of just a, the first phase would be just kind of a portion, like, you know, if I could kind of draw a diagonal line from Tennessee Avenue up like that. And it, you know, again, this is from an engineering perspective. We found that that kind of, the utilities, I'm nerding out too much, unless you want me to, we'll kind of head back to Spokane Street. You know, it'll come up, water will come up from Tennessee, and sewer will come from Spokane Street, and we have this little sliver. Then the next, phase one will be limited by that. Phase two, you know, we'll have to bring water and sewer under that public road to get, you know, the rest of this developed. So there is some limitation that way. And then, you know, now trying to switch to more of my developer hat, and again, I wish the applicant was here, you know, that leaves, you know, him holding on to an annexed piece of land for, like, you know, a long time. And I don't know what financially that entails, you know, and it kind of limits his freedoms. I don't think that he's really contemplated doing something like that, so I don't want to speak for him as to whether or not that that would be, you know, something that he'd be agreeable to.
Gotcha. Should something not meet the annexation requirements, it's not a personal property right to be annexed into the city, is it?
So the first portion of what we consider is a legislative decision as to whether or not it's in the best interest to
Right.
to come into the city. If that passes, the actual zoning of the property is the quasi-judicial decision.
My question is if that answer is no, it's not considered a personal property right to be allowed to enter, to be annexed into the city?
It is always the city's decision as to whether or not to annex property into the city.
Thank you. I just want to be clear with that.
Any questions, Mr. Van Houten?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Close of public hearing. So the first question is on the annexation.
So, is the annexation of the property in the best interest of the city?
I believe it is, for the same reasons we discussed in the previous hearing, but since this is a separate hearing, we'll restate them, that this gives us right-of-way and pedestrian improvements along Guy Road. It connects the parcel to the east, which is now in the city limits, through with, kind of throughway connectivity from Spokane over to Guy. And it's a county island, so we're bringing in an island, which is part of our goals and policies as well.
I don't know that I can confidently say that at this time, without having the through street and the connectivity to Spokane, I can confidently say that annexing this single piece of property is strictly within the best interest of the city. I wouldn't say that it is antagonistic to the city, or creates a liability, or is a detriment to the city, but I don't know that I can squarely put my foot down in it is a benefit to the city to annex this piece of property today.
Aaron, your thoughts?
Well, I think it, I think it does serve the city, and in continuation of the sidewalks, improvements of the roads, developing out that throughway, taking in a county island, all serve the city's interests.
Thank you. Nathan?
I would agree that it would serve the city's interests as well for what we have already stated.
Mr. Davis?
Absolutely agree that it does indeed serve the city's best interest.
Okay, next.
So kind of as a separate piece, because that's moving forward, you can consider the zoning part separately. So is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan?
It is. The future land use map has a designation of low-density residential, and this is a low-density development being proposed, keeping within the eight units per acre that's anticipated with the, within the focus area.
Yeah, remembering that it's R2 light. I like that phrase.
Light?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, I would just reiterate what we mentioned before, similar to what Aaron mentioned. It's kind of a, it's kind of an R1.5, I think, under strict adherence to R1. It probably wouldn't pass that, but with the allowances that developer is granting, I think it's a good fit there.
And I would like to reiterate that we can only look at the comprehensive plan, and the developer has the land use rights to request much more density than they're requesting. And under a very easy interpretation, perhaps, of that, they would be, their land rights would protect more density should they request it potentially. So I understand the frustration with it, but knowing the comprehensive plan and reading that and understanding that is key to understanding how much latitude we have as a council to make a decision on this.
Is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
It is, because we have policies about pedestrian connectivity, road connectivity, right-of-way acquisition, county islands, and diversity of housing types. All of these apply.
In particular, in this piece, if you look at policy 19, the clustering units of new development, I think, although it might be slightly different than what's there, I think it is a good cluster of development. I don't have any data, or have never could find any data, that says it's going to negatively impact home values. But you look at some of the other policies, as far as their following planning and development standards, it's inevitably enabling more residents to live in Post Falls, and it's enhancing and diversifying the economic base.
And does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing services within the city?
No, they raised no objections.
Do you have a motion?
Can we take this motion in two parts? Can we do this in annexation and then a zoning? If that would be okay.
Sure.
I'd just like to make one comment before a motion.
Sure.
You know, one of the things that is difficult about the rate of growth that we've seen here is, as in the comprehensive or the housing needs assessment, it's very evident to, I think, anyone who lives here, that finding that middle ground of affordability and a quality product is very difficult. And so, you know, I think someone else also mentioned, you know, if not in a location like this, then where would be the ideal location? You know, because part of that is, in trying to provide a variety of housing types, the alternative for someone in this financial market would be a higher-density home. So I think it's really important, this is for me, I guess, it's important for me to keep that in mind when trying to provide housing to a broad range of demographics and income levels, that, you know, another part of the housing needs assessment that I thought was a great example of good planning by the city is that we have about a 67% home ownership rate within Post Falls, despite the challenges that we face with affordable housing. And so I think this type of housing development, with the concessions that the developers have been very gracious about, will continue that trend of high rates of home ownership within a city where it's obvious that the prices continue to go up. And so I think it's a perfect fit that kind of fits that very challenging niche.
Yeah, and I think we're 8% above the national average for home ownership, so.
It's relevant on this parcel that if we were to decide to restrict it to R1, the result would be a cottage home kind of layout, which would be about the same number of houses, they would just be smaller. I think this is a good step to kind of find that nice middle-ground product that's maybe a little more family-friendly than what the code would allow for cottage homes, so.
Because as a reminder, R1 can be approved, but the cottage home will not come back to council. That is something that is approved only at P&amp;Z, so we don't have the ability to restrict that.
Motion?
I'm doing two parts.
Okay. I move to approve Elfer's Annex ANNX 24-10, and have staff prepare the final ordinance for annexation.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sig leader? As for reasons previously stated, no. Was that an aye or an aye? Oh, nay. No? Yeah, thanks. Pew?
Aye.
Motion passes.
As I, I think we could have divided that up, but I think the motion and second covered the entirety of the application. Is that correct?
No, didn't name the zoning.
Okay.
So I move to zone Elfer's Annex ANNX 24-10, R2 as requested, finding that the zoning meets the approval criteria of the Post Falls municipal code, as outlined in our deliberation, and direct staff to prepare a reasoned decision.
Second. Motion seconds. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sig leader? Because we make decisions as a group, and the group decided that it is annexed, I do not have the ability to unilaterally do that. It was approved to be annexed, so I also have a vote on what it is zoned, and I think that as an annexation, this is the most appropriate zone. Sorry, just to, I'm trying to be better about this, so aye. Pew?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you all for attending. It's been a long meeting so far. Appreciate your patience. Next item up is unfinished business returning ordinances and resolutions, and we do have one Spokane Street rehabilitation. I should ask first, council. Everybody okay to continue on without a break?
Yes. I'll survive.
If you were here, you'd say, no, we need a break.
I was told I have two minutes, so.
Perfect.
That's great.
Clock's ticking.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Ravini Projects Division Manager. So a few weeks ago, I presented on the Spokane Street project and provided some foreshadowing of some additional work that we're looking at adding to that project for the rehabilitation of Spokane and Polane Roundabout. So this is an amendment with Welch-Komer, the consulting engineer, to develop some design documents. Quick clarification, the council memo notes Jackson Flushman, not him, he was instrumental in helping me submit this when I was out of the office, so appreciate his help. This is an overview of the roundabout, provided this at the last presentation. This is south of Prairie, so Prairie would be out of the frame here, to the north. A little bit of background, the roundabout was originally constructed in 2009 or there about. So it's been about 15 years, typical design life of pavement in a roundabout typically ranges from 15 to 20 years, so we're within that timeframe. This is a repair that was budgeted as a Streets Division project. So the Streets Division performs regular annual maintenance, and this was in their list of project repairs. Recent time, some patching that was occurring in the roundabout led to some discovery that the repair extents extend beyond the actual asphalt. So we need to replace the base rock, and that also includes likely some subgrade repairs to the roundabout. Looking at just the scope of work, resource availability of the crew, timing, and our goal in minimizing disruptions of traffic, it's staff's recommendation that we pursue this as a contracted project under a Public Works contract. This is the design of the original roundabout. Here's some photos. I provided these last time, but just to illustrate the cracking, which is typically representative of sub-base failure. This amendment would authorize Welch-Komer to proceed with the design. They developed some contract documents. Those documents would be used to solicit bids. The estimate of construction work is less than $200,000. That's the current contracting estimate. That would allow us, under Idaho code, to pursue this as informal bidding for Public Works construction. So what that looks like is we would reach out to three, at least three paving contractors. We intend to include Interstate Concrete and Asphalt as one of those contractors. They are the contractor doing the work on the larger Spokane Street project. Following that, it would be our intent that staff would return to council, either with a recommendation or an update on this process. Financial summary, this amendment would add, increase Welch-Komer's contract by $40,000. We are requesting a $4,000 contract contingency for any design elements, and this would also continue through construction that may occur or come up. Total request this evening is for $44,000. Total request this evening is for $44,000. Want to talk a little bit on the funding, so we do have this budgeted, and it is funded through the Streets Reconstruction Line Item. So that is a annual maintenance line item that we use. This estimated cost of up to $200,000 would all be covered out of that line item. We included the Spokane Street line item. As you, I think are well aware, we received grant funding for that project. It's fully grant-funded. The bid pricing came in underestimates, so any unused grant funds for the larger Spokane Street project could be applied towards the Pole Line and Spokane Roundabout Rehabilitation and offsetting city dollars. So next steps, pending authorization this evening of the amendment would move forward with a design, development of documents, proceed with an informal bidding, mentioned we anticipate coming back at a future meeting. I would suspect that would be at the earliest a meeting in May, if, if we are able to. We'll have a better idea of timeframe. The intent is that this would be a project for this construction season. On a related note, and my final comment here, we are starting construction, resuming construction on Spokane Street from Fourth to Southeast starting Monday. So we'll have some traffic impacts. We've been working with our media department as well as ITD to get the message out and provide notice. With that, I will stand for questions.
And I'd make a comment. When this came before us, I couldn't figure out why we were replacing after four or five years. And it's been since 2009, and I drive it every day, and it's in terrible shape, so I'm glad you're moving forward with it. Questions, Andrew? Comments? Do you have any motion?
I would move to approve Spokane Street Rehabilitation Contract Amendment with Welch Comer Engineers for the Spokane Street and Pole Line Avenue Roundabout.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sig leader? Pew?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye. Well, I was, I was confused because I didn't hear you respond, and I kind of got distracted.
Oh, sorry.
That was me.
Yeah, okay.
Now, motion passes. Thank you. New business tonight, we have none. Citizens issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address council on a, on a city-related item that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, come forward. Seeing none, we do have an administrative staff report, area of impact?
Two minutes? No.
Can, can I just lead this off, Mr. Wilson? I told him I was going to do this. Just so you know, this is coming up because of our state legislature and people in the southern part of the state not getting along. We've not getting along. We've had no issues up here. We've had great working relationships with county, with the neighboring cities, and because of folks down in the Boise Eagle area not being able to play in the same sandbox, legislation was passed, which now affects us, so. That's what Mr. Wilson's going to do.
I'm going to keep this brief, hopefully. If you have questions, feel free to stop me. I'm going to try to blast through this as quickly as we can. We've been here a long time. So the mayor's correct, we had some legislation that was passed last year after disputes from a couple of cities in the Boise area who couldn't play nice in the sandbox with each other, and were annexing into each other's areas of impact, which got the legislature involved, and they changed the rules for all of us. So that's what we're up to. So quickly, what we're going to run to tonight is the history, what our prior area of city impact looked like, what we're proposing for a new, what's now called, area of impact. You'll see that I've scratched out city. That changes, sort of indicative of the change in focus. It used to be to protect cities. It's now not about cities, it's about protecting counties.
I thought that was a formatting error when I was reading it.
It was me being cheeky. So, and then we'll talk about next steps. So in the local land use planning act, and it's been there since the planning act was adopted in the mid-'70s, there was a requirement for each city to establish an area of city impact around its boundaries that would address not just areas that it might grow into, but areas that might impact the, the well-being of the city. That could be because it's a trade area, it could because of geographic or natural features. An example I like to use is if you have a city wells or a city, your water infrastructure is outside your city limits, you're never going to grow into that area, but you might want to have a seat at the table with the county talking about what the land use rules are in that area because you want to protect your water supply. So it, it served all of those types of things. It wasn't solely about annexation. So because of that, most cities' areas of city impact were significantly larger than areas that they may potentially grow into because it gave you a chance to sit down with the Board of County Commissioners and negotiate what the rules would be in that area. So that changed last year. Senate Bill 1403 amended the act, and it changed it again from areas of city impact to areas of impact, that is now solely focused on annexation. The act requires that every five years, we sit down and renegotiate these boundaries with the county. That is going to be a wild change because most of these boundaries historically, because again, you're planning out for areas that are not just about growth, have been in place for many, many, many years. And so we're going to be doing this now on an iterative basis every five years. Under the new scheme, the county sets the boundaries, we provide them our draft, they do what they think is best based on their review after a public hearing that we pay for. They dictate the land use rules that are in effect in this area. It's no longer a given that we have a seat at the table to negotiate what those rules look like. So that's kind of where we're at. So we have until the end of this year to have a new area of impact in place with the county. So the statute spells out the things that we're supposed to look at in establishing those boundaries. We should be looking at what we're anticipating in residential and commercial growth, what are the geographic factors that might decide whether a piece of property would annex or not, what are we planning for transportation connectivity, where do we see water and sewer going, and then what are the service boundaries of other districts? And in that, the biggest one we think about probably is schools, is you try to not cross into another school district's boundaries and having students on one side of the road going to one school district and students on another side going to another school district. So those are the things that we were required to look at. There were some things that the boundaries can't do. They can't, they can only include areas likely to be annexed within five years and within two miles of the existing city limits. You can't divide a parcel, you can't overlap with existing, other existing areas. So this becomes a fun map-making process, trying to make sure that you're doing these things. Our current impact area, we jointly established that with the cities of Rathrum and Hayden back in 2004. The goal at the time was to really protect the aquifer from sewer discharge. And so each area had a relatively small exclusive area that was just for that city, and then a much larger area where all of the cities essentially could potentially annex into that area depending on who could provide sewer service to the area, trying to keep affluent from going into the aquifer. Annexation to the shared areas required essentially reaching out to the other cities and checking in with them and seeing what they thought. And, and development in those areas had to meet our standards under the county's rules. So this is kind of hard to see. Once you try to blow it up to get all of a boundary on one map that, it stretches and it makes it a little bit weird. Whoa. And the formatting has gone really, really wonky, so I'm not sure how hopeful this is at all. The main thing to take away here is essentially this pink area, this is all shared tier. The orange area is Hauser's. You'll again notice that Hauser had this huge area of impact because it's not just about annexation. And then we would bump into, all of this was shared tier, and I'm not sure why the formatting went crazy. But it did, so there you go. And then we would bump into, essentially at Hutter Avenue, into Court Lane's area of impact. So we began meeting with the other cities in the fall to try to work out, can we undo the shared tier? Because now it has to be all, you can't have any overlaps, and to make sure that we could also, to the extent we could, undo any other overlapping areas so that we could present a map to the county that hopefully they wouldn't have to sort at any, sort out any disagreements. When we did that, we set out with something, some sort of guidance in mind. We wanted to follow roads if possible, trying to make it easy for people to understand where the boundary is. We wanted to follow school district boundaries to the extent possible. We can't split parcels. We also, to the extent possible, didn't want to split ownerships because sometimes owners own multiple parcels that are sitting next to each other. For us, we wanted to make sure that our water and wastewater master planning efforts were respected, and we were capturing those areas. We didn't want to exclude an area that we may need in the future to put a, a lift station to serve additional parts of the city. And then frankly, to shrink the boundary to meet the five-year and, and two-mile requirements. So we've met at this point with Court Lane, Hauser, Hayden, and Rathrum. We haven't been able to schedule meetings with Hutter and State Line. State Line does not do annexations. They don't have an area of impact. Hutter does have an area of impact. We likely have a small overlap with them. They don't have water and sewer infrastructure, so it's unlikely that they're going to be doing a lot of annexation. They have done a limited amount of annexation for, essentially, if you've seen the Garage Town development out there, that's essentially large storage areas that doesn't require infrastructure. We have resolved most of the overlapping areas. We still have a small overlap with Hauser. I'll tell you, yesterday Hauser reached back out again, and so we're meeting with them again next Monday, so there's a chance that we will still resolve that overlap. And I am really sorry, in your packet it is not doing this, and I'm not sure why it's doing it here because I just looked at it over there. This is so weird. I'm not sure how best to do this because it's not coming up the same way. Hopefully you can see it in your, if you're looking at it in your, there. So if you'll look, this small overlap with Hauser is essentially this area right here. The, the slashes, that's Hauser's area of impact.
Okay.
We think it's important because we have the ability to provide sewer. It's very likely that we're going to see coming out of the ITD's planning process some additional industrial development going up that corridor. So we would like to have the ability, if sewer service is there to support industrial growth, to have the ability to provide that area sewer in our master planning. Essentially, what we've done across the, the rest of the boundary is going back over to the Hutter area. We've essentially drawn our boundary around Hutter's existing city limits. Partly that is because we can sewer that area and they can't, and we're likely to see requests for annexation before the five-year period in, in this instance. We also anticipate in our wastewater master plan, a lift station that sits right about here that would serve sort of all of this drainage coming down this way. So it's important for us to be able to sewer other parts of town to have that area in our area of impact.
I'm sorry, who's yellow and who's blue?
So.
Oh, I guess Rathrum and Hayden.
So, yeah, blue would be Rathrum, yellow would be Hayden.
Okay.
And then you've got Court Lane off the map in purple here. So then we would go up Hutter, essentially coming over on Prairie, up to then Hayden. This is all owned by the Jacklins, who are in the, in the process developing. So we tried, again, respecting bound, ownership boundaries, following along. You get lost behind whatever formatting thing is going on here. We essentially wrap around the water, the, the land application properties. And then as we come down, we've pulled back along Beck Road because we don't see any of this area as area that we're going to get to in five years. It's just, it's not a realistic possibility. The one additional area that we have added that we don't have a strong preference for is we pulled the boundary up to the road here rather than following the park boundary just because we're, again, we're trying to follow roads. If we don't want to include that, we're not losing any sleep over it. And then obviously, we've captured all of the little infill pockets that no one else could get to with annexation anyways. So, sorry, I have no idea why this is doing this. We'll move on. So based on your input tonight, we'll bring back any, a map reflecting any changes that you want to make tonight. From there, we will forward that map to the county and begin discussions with them. They have expressed an openness at this point to negotiate the rules that might be in effect in this boundary. They're not required to do that, so that's a nice offer from them. And we would hopefully move forward in conjunction with the other cities so that we're only doing one hearing at the county rather than one hearing per city at the county. I think that's an inefficient way to do things, and probably it will save us all money if we're splitting the, the costs for one hearing rather than everybody paying for their own. And with that, I will be happy to take questions.
I think you've done a nice job coming up, coming up with a solution for a problem that didn't exist, number one. Number two, I.
That's government, right?
Yeah. Number two, I appreciate the fact that, you know, as you said, basically there's no infighting with ourselves and the other cities. We have the one overlap, and Hutter's, our Hauser's already reached back out to us. I don't like the fact that the county can kind of control it, and I don't like the fact that we pay for public hearings as the county holds. Other than that, we're required by law to do it, and again, I think you've come up with a nice solution.
Does every piece of land in the county have to be?
Not everything. So what happens is, because we're now confined with that sort of two-mile radius. So in theory, everything that was in our current boundary was within two miles. And so we pulled back a little bit. For us, the major exercise was undoing the overlap with Hayden and Rathrum.
Do we, do we truly anticipate in the next five years, we'll annex from Pole Line up to the 51 between McGuire and Chase? It's sadly underneath your little deal there. I'm sorry.
You know, honestly, this is one of those things where it's in our current boundary. It meets the requirement of being within two years. It's conceivable that we could see requests in five years to annex into that area.
But it's not detrimental if we don't annex it, and it's, this isn't like, like a future land use map.
If you all want to pull that out, we're, we're not losing any sleep over any of this.
But, but if we leave it in, it doesn't require us to do it.
No, it doesn't require us to annex it. You still have the same flexibility you have today.
Okay.
This was our best guess at, I'm going to get on my soapbox a little bit. So when you're trying to say, "What is it likely to annex in five years?", that requires us to get in the head of every property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And say, "What are they going to do in five years?", or maybe they sell the property, and that is, what does that person do? We're also looking at two council elections down the road, and what does two councils want to do with annexation? So it becomes a bit of a mystery how to draw this map, and so we thought it was most prudent to just try to shrink it back to two miles, look at areas where we think we could potentially see an application in those areas, and call it a day.
Sounds great.
So having something within our area of impact, does that stop other cities from annexing it?
No. So that was, that was the dust-up. That was the dust-up. The annexation statute, there's been a couple of attempts to try to say you can't annex into other areas, city, areas of impact. That has never passed. All it requires is you can annex any area that is in your planning area. So if you put it in your comprehensive plan and plan for that area, you can annex that area.
I'm trying to figure out what impact this has on anything, because we could, we can annex outside these boundaries, and other people can annex inside these boundaries.
Yeah, again, I'm going to get back on my soapbox. I think we took a perfectly good tool and made it useless.
Yeah.
But Warren, you're saying that the county is willing to meet with us, and therefore we can have some rules and regulations within this area of, if they agree to it.
The county is going to negotiate with us and allow us to have some input on what the rules are in effect outside city limits, but in areas that we may grow into.
And what you mean by that is like the land use of those areas, because the county can grant different land use.
So it, it could get to land use, but it's also public infrastructure. So if somebody wants to build, I don't know, they're going to build a, a new, a use of some sort, and they don't build in a way that matches up with our infrastructure standards, and then we have a really difficult time servicing that area if they're not prepared to install the sewer at, at the location that we need to be able to connect. And so coordinating what that infrastructure looks like is, is pretty important.
Okay, okay. So there, yes, thank you.
So we don't have any plans to annex Bonner Fair, or to include Bonner's Ferry in our?
I know.
Any other questions?
So the map looks good to me. I, I just had a question for my own information, south of the river. Is it plausible to annex that? What, what would the infrastructure look like to?
So it is legally, this, there's case law on this. As long as you can bridge over it, you can annex it. So the, the river is not a, doesn't get in the way of being contiguous for the purposes of annexation. There's nothing, nothing that requires that you provide services to areas that you annex necessarily. The biggest issue is extending services south of the river becomes problematic because you don't have enough crossings to get water and sewer over there, and all of that, at least along the riverfront, is more or less developed, and it becomes really hard and expensive to retrofit, and so it's probably not ever going to happen.
Yeah, I guess you'd have to run water and, and a force main under the bridge and then through the road.
Yeah.
It sounds like a big undertaking.
If you wanted to force someone to annex, then you have to figure out how you're going to provide services. But if you had somebody just for a wild hair decided they wanted to ask for annexation, they could ask if they're contiguous across the river.
If you'd ever want to see a.
If you'd ever want to see a full council chambers, try to, try to buy the annexing south of the river, see how many people show up in opposition. You, do you need a motion?
I don't, this was just for information and to solicit feedback, the next plan would be we'll bring this back if there's no amendments to you, probably on the consent calendar, just to get you to ratify the draft map. It is just a draft map, we will ship, ship that off to the county and begin discussions with them on hopefully an agreement on what the rules would be in that area.
I would like Post Falls to stay pink.
We'll go for that. I like it.
Thanks, Warren. Mayor and council comments tonight, I have none, how about council?
Oh, can I advertise the big park cleanup, or?
Sure.
Tree planting, so, oh turkeys, is it April seventeenth? We are having our, April fourteenth is the Camelan, like Friends of the Park Day, and so we meet at Camelan Park at nine o'clock, and it will be an all-day cleanup this time, and we're, we're planting like six hundred trees, lunch is provided by the chamber, the other ones are half-days, but I would encourage anybody that has the day available to come, it's really, it's really fun.
Thank you. And we, as stated earlier, we had our executive session prior to the meeting, so the next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Wait, oh, wait, you have to do a motion on the executive session. Oh.
We do need it?
On this.
No, we don't have anything coming for a motion.
We didn't have any, we had it there in case something was going to come forward.
We had it there just in case.
Okay.
Yeah, just in case. So.
We can't go.
To adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.